So, good evening, everybody, and welcome on a rainy Wednesday evening in late fall. We're glad you're all here. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24, and RCN Channel 13, and Fios Channel 1962. It will also be rebroadcast at a later date. Tonight's meeting is also being filmed by Noel Gasker, a journalism student at Emerson College. So, as we always do on the open meeting law, we notify when people are filming or using photography. If anyone wishes to sign up for public comment, please see our school committee staff, Ms. Lena Pavek, out in the main hallway. Sign up for public comment will close at 6:30 PM. We'll move on now to the approval of the minutes. If the minutes were approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway following with other handouts. If changes are made, you may access the minutes tomorrow on the DPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 4th, 2017 school committee meeting as presented. Thank you, Dean Robinson, and it sounds like a second phone, Dean Coleman. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang. Excuse me, superintendent, I'm sorry. I should have also noted, I'm delighted to mention today that we do have a contingent from Sociedad Latina with us, a number of our students, so I always like to mention when we have a number of students in the room, and we have a number of the community organizers from Sociedad Latina, folks who have ranged from three months with the organization to nine years, and are now into college and still helping out, but particularly, we have students from Fenway, from XL, from Madison Park, the TV program. I hope the folks in the cable office will give her a tour later on. And Charles Town High, how could I forget Charles Town High? So, we're delighted you're all here today, and welcome as always. This school committee and this district obviously thinks very highly of Sociedad Latina, and we say that also including our fellow member, who is the executive director of it, but we always think very highly of the students from Sociedad Latina when we get a chance to spend time with them, so thanks for joining us today. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, school committee, good evening, everyone. This is always a great time of the year, such a beautiful time during, beautiful time in New England. The fall, with everything that's going on, it's always, it's very picturesque, and we in Boston Public Schools are excited to share a lot of good things that have happened at the beginning of the school year. I want to start off this evening by sharing a few bright spots, and the first bright spot I want to share is going to actually, Dr. McCur- it's going to be about our open house, DPS Fall Open House, and Dr. McKibben McCurry is going to come up. Dr. McKibben McCurry is our senior advisor and managing director for our Office of External Affairs, and she's going to talk about the Fall Open House that we will have this Saturday, October 28th. Thank you, Dr. McKibben McCurry.
You're welcome. Unfortunately, there are some slides that we're missing that I'll speak to, but I'm happy to share them with you guys afterwards, that are going to highlight some of the larger convening events that we'll be having on Saturday, but it's an all-day event. It's open to the public, we're really excited. We have a series of workshops that are interactive for students, so we have resume writing, we have some financial literacy classes taking place, we have a first-time home buyers course that will be here, and then we have a series of corporate partners that are going to be setting up shop to talk to anybody who comes in, but particularly our students, about employment opportunities for them. We also are going to have a morning session that's going to be led by Dr. Donna Muncie that is focused on a discussion about middle grades and the configuration of our grades throughout the district. And for lunch, we have a keynote luncheon with Ann Klee from General Electric. We also have the CEO from Carbonite will be with us, and we have representative from LEGO Education, several other really amazing folks who are going to guide us through a discussion about the importance of building the diversity pipeline, it's particularly into the STEM career pathways. And then in the afternoon, we have a special session about sneaker design with about 15 of the top designers from local footwear companies who are going to be able to talk to young people about how you can transfer skills from any industry into the footwear design industry and vice versa. So, we're really excited, and we hope people come, and everything is online at www.bostonpublicschools.org, and I believe it's a slash Fall Open House.
Thank you so much. And for all of you who are watching on TV, and those who are here, we will also be collecting food, clothing, other supplies for families arriving here from Puerto Rico, US Virgin Islands, other Caribbean islands, so please stop by, it's a wonderful event. And stick, so that's kind of the website, you'll see the information on the website, it's also up there on the bottom. Okay? Sticking to the fall theme, I like to praise a few of our schools who are holding fall festivals, and I just want to show some photos. You're looking here at photos from the Manapan Early Elementary School, where they had their first-ever fall festival this past weekend. We also have photos from the McKay and PJ Kennedy Schools in East Boston, which also have fall festivals. And as you can see, not only is there face painting, pony riding, delicious food, but these fall festivals are just a great way to build community and increase parent engagement. So, congratulations to all our schools that held fall festivals. Next bright spot. I want to take a moment to give a progress report on our ongoing work in assisting families from Puerto Rico and other Caribbean islands. DPS, along with our city and community partners, have done quite the admirable job of coordinating services. This week, DPS, in partnership with Sociedad Latina's IBA, South Boston de Accion, opened up pop-up centers to provide these families a single location to enroll in school and to connect these families and these two young people to important resources such as housing, healthcare, clothing, and food. As of today, we have enrolled 56 students from Puerto Rico, and this number has more than doubled since last Friday. This work has been quite impressive, in my opinion. It's, I like to just publicly thank a few people. I want to thank school committee member Alex Oliver Davila, who has agreed to co-chair this effort, along with Sonia Gomez Banery from, she leads our Countdown to Kindergarten work, and our assistant superintendent of Engage, Monica Roberts. I also want to thank all the community organizations that have come to table to be a partner, and three of these organizations are actually housing these pop-up centers. I also want to give a special thanks to Countdown, I'm sorry, Cratos to Crayons. That organization graciously donated 750 backpacks full of school supplies, along with another 750 coats, hats, and gloves. And the Belmont Hill School, which has donated clothing and school supplies as well. So, it's very important that we welcome these families in a way that puts them at ease. We know that these young people and these families have experienced quite a bit of trauma, many of them losing their homes and having to uproot their lives, and so this is just another example of how we are ensuring that we are creating the safe welcoming and sustaining environments for our young people. So, again, if you want to contribute and want to help, come this Saturday to our open house. The next bright spot, I'll give an update on Ed Vestas' School on the Move. Ed Vestas is once again celebrating the work of our hard-working school leaders, teachers, and most importantly, our students, with the 12th Annual Thomas Pezzon School on the Move Prize on Wednesday, November 1st. The winner will receive a $100,000 award, and the two runner-ups will receive a $10,000 award. The three finals this year are, one, the Mildred K-8 in Manapan, two, the Donald McKay K-8 School in East Boston, and three, the PJ Kennedy in East Boston. These three schools are being recognized for their work in closing opportunity and achievement gaps and achieving rapid improvement. So, a special congratulations to those three school leaders, Mildred Avenue Principal Andrew Rollins, PJ Kennedy Principal Kristen Gonzalez, as well as former principal Walter Henderson, who is now at the Manapan Early Elementary School, and then McKay Principal Jordan Wymer. And always a deep gratitude to the CEO of Ed Vestas, President and CEO of Ed Vestas, Laura Perrell, members of their board, and those who have come together to make such an important and significant contribution to better the lives of young people, and we're excited for the award ceremony next Wednesday. The next update. This is STEM Week. For the second year in a row, 6,000 students in Boston Public Schools, grades six through eight, are participating in innovative hands-on science and engineering projects. We're looking right now at some photos from the Hurley School, where students in lab coats are looking at DNA, and even dissecting sheep brains. Students in 30 schools are doing everything from learning how to build interactive robots to designing video games with custom graphics and music. And at the Linden School, I believe, students are coding using Scratch. I'd like to thank I2 Learning for partnering with DPS and making us the first urban school district in the nation to launch STEM Week. As we all know, STEM occupations are growing at nearly twice the rate of other occupations in our country, and a STEM education can help close racial and gender gaps found in math and science fields. I also want to thank our other sponsors, including MathWorks and Vertex, for their collaboration on this effort. And my last bright spot. At the end of last week, and this weekend, I had the opportunity to participate at the Council of Great City Schools Conference, annual conference, in Cleveland, Ohio. Boston Public Schools sent various teams to present on a lot of the great work that is happening in DPS. We were celebrated through these five presentations, and also just as importantly, I'd like to congratulate Chairman O'Neill for being honored last week by the Council of Great City Schools as a finalist for the 2017 Green Garner Award, which recognizes outstanding leadership among urban superintendents and board members. Chairman O'Neill was one of 11 finalists vying for the nation's top award in urban education, and this award goes to either a school committee or a board member one year, and the next year will be a superintendent, and it goes back to a board member. Michael's, and I should say Chairman O'Neill's immense knowledge of the city of Boston and his loyalty to this district is incredibly deep. He's an advocate for our young people, he's a graduate of Boston Public Schools. So, I just want to make sure I take a moment this evening as our final bright spot for this evening, to publicly recognize him for this important recognition.
Michael, you want to say a few words before I go on with other things? I will simply say, I was deeply honored by the nomination, and extremely appreciative of the fact that some fellow members, district staff, and school leaders, some community members, BSAC, and others spoke up in support of that, which I found out after the fact, and I was very appreciative. We're one of 70 members of the Council of Great City Schools, and we're all large urban districts, and I absolutely view this nomination of the extremely high regard that Boston School Committee and the Boston Public Schools are held in by our peers in urban education across the country. We go to this, we go to this event, and we go to learn, and we go to share, and a number of the district staff made presentations. I have to call out one in particular that was done on social-emotional learning, and a national, three different districts were presenting, and a national expert was coordinating it, and she stood up and said at the end, "Boston is leading the way on social-emotional learning," and "leading the nation on social-emotional," I want to make sure the phrase was right, "leading the nation on social-emotional learning and health and wellness." And other cities called her to ask, "What's the Boston method? How come they're getting it right, and how can we copy it?" Including Chicago called this expert to ask. And so, when we go to these conferences, we not only share, and so many of the team from DPS was presenting in a number of different presentations, but we also go to learn, and we learn tremendously. We go from event to, from presentation to presentation. The superintendent and I try to split up, and as does his team, and hit as many as we can, and learn, and when we go on a national stage, Boston is thought of very, very highly. We're all Bostonians, we criticize, we push to do better, we expect to do better, but when we step back to a 10,000-foot viewpoint, this city, this district, and yes, this school committee is thought of very, very highly, and it's because we all work cohesively together to try to improve the opportunity for our 57,000 youth. So, it was a little bit sad not to win, but I do congratulate Dr. Felton Williams, the board chair of the Long Beach Unified School District, and former past chair of the Council of Great City Schools, who did win, and it was a very well-deserved win on his part. But I was honored to be nominated and to be a finalist and represent our city. So, thank you, Dr. Chang. And we'll move on now, any questions and comments for the superintendent on his report?
I got one quick update, one more update, I apologize. Just very quickly, I wanted to share with the school committee that 100% of our schools have submitted requests for the 21st Century Fund Through Bill, DPS, and that's, this is the $13 million set aside by Mayor Walsh to make some immediate and tangible investments into every single DPS school through 21st century furniture. And so, 50, over 50,000 items have been selected, 100% of our schools have submitted their requests, and so, excited about organizing all these orders and getting these furniture to our schools during the school year. So, that is my last update for the evening, thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Chang. Any questions or comments for the superintendent's report? Can we now entertain, oh yes, Dean Robinson?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Chang, highlighting the stars in our schools and what's taking place with the STEM Week. As a recipient of the great curiosity that has been expanded within the kids that I'm around, building rockets at their school, there's been a lot of excitement, and so, you're absolutely right, it is leveling the playing field for our boys and girls, and I've been excited to see the work that's happening at the school, so thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? Yes?
Mine will be very quick. Congratulations on your nomination. I also want to say that, you know, Dr. Chang always likes to thank everyone, but I think we also need to thank him, because when we talked about what was happening in Puerto Rico, he was the first person to, you know, we said, "What can we do?" And we were texting back and forth, and he just was like lightning speed, so I want to thank him, because he also, he also has a big job, and obviously, to take this on and really be the lead, I want to thank him. And there's been just an outpouring of, I mean, if I could remember all the places that are donating, I can even, that we've had response, like Haley House, Beth Israel Children's Hospital, a ton of places, Emmanuel College. So, I just want to thank the city of Boston, too, for, you know, pouring your hearts out. Please continue to give to our families, we've had really great response in terms of families coming into the pop-up centers and feeling that it's a really welcoming and warm space for them after all the trauma that they've suffered. So, thank you, Dr. Chang.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any other questions or comments? Can we now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as presented? Thank you, Dean Robinson, give a second. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to receiving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries, we'll move on to general public comment, Ms. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining, and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allowed additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or select a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. Our first speaker this evening is Griselda, and she'll be followed by Stephen Kramer.
And Ms. Sullivan, how many speakers do we have this evening?
I'm about to find that out.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Griselda Bakiasi. I'm a graduate of Brighton High, and I have a BA in Biology from Brenmore College. I'm here to request that Boston Public School reinstate Ms. Ellie May O'Toole and her AP Physics, Engineering, and Robotics STEM programs. For the last two decades, these programs have provided hundreds of students like me with career-based technical training, rigorous academic, work-based learning, internships, and sustained mentorships. These are the characteristics that, programs that the Boston Public Schools purport to one for their link-learning pathway initiatives, and yet, the committee eliminated all these STEM programs and have put Ms. Ellie May O'Toole in the excess teacher category. I encourage all of you to read the testimonials in the dossier from former students. They, like me, are speaking out so that current students will not be deprived of what so powerfully impacted our lives. If you do not have a copy of the dossier, I'll be happy to email it to you, and I'll describe my own experience that I've had with Ms. Ellie May O'Toole STEM program. I, in my junior year of high school, I moved here from Albania, and each of my parents took two minimum wage jobs, and my sister and I enrolled at Brighton High. I had very little English, and my first class was with Ms. O'Toole, and I was very intimidated, headed back, headed for the back row, and instead of letting me disappear into the back, Ms. O'Toole greeted me in a way that made me feel part of the class and welcomed by all. Once seated, the student next to me asked if I was joining the robotics team. In this team, I met my friends for life, and we all had a great time, and Ms. O'Toole brought in university engineering students, professional engineers, to guide and teach us. She molded us into a diverse, fun-loving family of achievers, brought food for those of us could not afford it or bring it from home, and we worked together to build robots. Each year, the judges of robotics competitions singled us out for awards, and I learned math, physics, computer science, and through the teamwork, I quickly became proficient in English. I firmly believe that having Ms. O'Toole as my coach was the luckiest thing that has ever happened to me. She helped me with SAT prep and college applications, she even bought me clothes for my interview with Posse Foundation Scholarship, prepared me for the interviews, and helped many of us get those interviews. Thanks to her guidance, I ended up receiving Posse STEM Scholarship, and I'll be eternally grateful to have had the good fortune to have Ms. O'Toole as my teacher and coach. Thank you for your attention, I'll be happy to stay after the meeting and answer any questions.
Thanks. Ms. Bakiasi, and congratulations on being a Posse scholar, and you're at what school now?
I graduated from Brenmore College.
Brenmore, excellent, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for joining us this evening.
We have three more speakers, starting with Stephen Kramer, and he'll be followed
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm Steve Kramer. I'm the State Director for FIRST, for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. I want to make sure that all the members of this committee are appraised of five facts. One, in 2004, a grant of over $300,000 was made by the Smith Family Foundation of Boston for use by the schools in the city. This grant supported the creation of numerous teams of students and adults as part of the internationally successful robotics program. First, the grant provided limited seed money to a team for only three years, after which the teams and their supporters would need to raise between $14,000 and $25,000 a year to maintain that. At one time, there were 20 high schools in this community supported by this grant. I'd like to thank the chairman for recognizing the students who are, yeah, the former students who are here tonight. Each one of them attended one of the high schools that had one of these teams in it, but no longer has that team. Second item, quite a few Boston educators saw what FIRST could provide for their students, the opportunity to develop knowledge, skills, and values that would profoundly affect their lives. These teams formed in the city of Boston, used that support of the initial grant, and then they continued to fundraise and seek support. It's estimated that between $1 and $2 million worth of resources were provided to this school system. Number three, alone among these teams, Ellie May O'Toole's team was the only team to survive. It survived due to her extraordinary dedication, expertise, and unique success at raising all the funds required. The team was a stunning success, garnering multiple awards and accolades from judges. Finally, number five, on the day she returned with her triumphant team from the competition last spring, she was informed that all her programs, including the FIRST team, were being abruptly eliminated. Now, the materials that she had gathered are at risk. We have seen the materials from other of those 20 teams disappear into a black hole, resources that were provided for the good of the students of Boston. I'm here to try to save those resources and to save the programs that we started so long ago. The value of FIRST is obvious and evident most places outside the city of Boston. I support this assertion with the following examples. The state of New Hampshire has recently funded an expansion of teams with state money. The schools in Michigan must have a FIRST program to qualify for specific state STEM initiative monies. States like Connecticut and Wisconsin treat FIRST as a varsity sport in which each student participating is eligible to earn a varsity letter for participation. This is a sport of the mind. Senator Al Franken in his recent book describes making a special trip to support the top FIRST team in Minnesota. There are thousands of FIRST programs worldwide in over 96 nations. How strange, no, how shameful it is that there are no longer any teams in the traditional public schools of Boston. The situation is in direct result of the actions and policies of the Boston Public School Department. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And I know you did send that as well as an email, so all schools- And I know you did send that as well as an email, so all school committee members do have a copy of that.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from John Mudd, and he'll be followed by Rodolfo Aguilar.
Good evening, John Mudd, Advocate. I wanted to talk to you tonight about the principal evaluation, which was very elaborately discussed last time, and I don't want to talk about the specifics of the evaluation of this year, but more to talk with you about some broader items or themes that you might consider including in the standards for next year's evaluation. The first, is no surprise to you, will be a more explicit recognition of the opportunity and achievement gap goals. It's an overarching goal of the school committee. I think it could be dealt with more explicitly, you know, in the standards for the superintendent and hopefully in his responses. This is something where an impact statement is required of principals and reporters here. To you, I would hope that your evaluation of him would sort of be a model of how you include this issue in a discussion. Second is the whole issue of human capital. I must say, to an outsider, it seems to me, outsider, I mean, a non-educator, I'm pretty inside on a lot of issues, it seems to me that educators often view instruction and academics over here and personnel issues as part of operations over there. And I think the evidence shows that there's probably nothing more important to improving instruction and education for kids than the quality of the teachers and the quality of the school leaders. And I think it's quality, and we have a goal here in addition of diversity. So I would hope that this would be one of the highest priorities you would add to your next year's evaluation of the superintendent and how the district is doing. I think it requires unusual cross-entered departmental collaboration, and that is a crucial issue between academics, the schools division, and human capital. Often, it's just left to human capital. That will not solve the problem. Third is the whole question of implementation. We're often very good at developing plans. I think I've read the Essentials, what is it, the Essentials for Instructional Equity is an eloquent statement. The question I kept reading to myself was, how are we going to get there? What are the steps to take to prepare the teachers, to have the skills, to actually do culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and close achievement gaps in their classrooms? And I think some attention to that whole issue of, I guess the jargon is the fidelity of implementation, would be an important question to ask. Fourth, am I finished? Am I, I mean, over yet?
Thirty seconds.
No. Fourth, the question of central office versus school autonomy. And in my jargon, decentralization is not balkanization. School leaders, principals, and headmasters are managers. They receive decentralized authority in order to implement the goals of the district. So the question in my mind, I think the evaluation question is, how are we preparing those principals to implement our goals, and how are we holding them accountable for realizing them or not? Finally, student assignment. Student assignment, you know, the home-based system, you will be presumably doing proposals or considering proposals for possible mergers or school closings over the next years. How, what is the equity analysis of that? And particularly for ELL and SPED and ELL-SPED students, how do we need to look at the issue of grouping so that they have access to quality programs? Final comment, sorry, metrics. I think Dean Coleman mentioned that last time. I think there was more in this one, input and process, rather than metrics about what did we achieve, and I would hope the next time there could be more of the numbers of how we really are achieving our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Our next speaker is Rodolfo Aguilar.
Thank you for the opportunity that I have to address the committee tonight. My name is Rodolfo Aguilar. I graduated Jamaica Plain High School in 1982, and my statement has to do on the release of the statewide MCAS results. And they may come as a surprise to some, but not to the parents across the Commonwealth, especially the families of color who attend many of the urban and gateway cities' schools across the state. These results are a powerful battle cry that equip us with the information we need to dig into the hard work of improving the quality of education our children receive in many troubled districts across Massachusetts. It's time to get serious about taking immediate action to address the achievement gaps that plague many of the schools educating our Black and Latino, sorry, children, and stop burying our heads in the sand. We have no time to waste. Every child in Massachusetts deserves access to high-quality education, and these results give us the information we need to know to focus in the children who need our help the most. Parents are not interested in the petty bickering and philosophical arguments about whether we have the right to know where schools in crisis are. We simply want to see an immediate plan of action to correct the systems that are failing to give our children the education they have been promised and they deserve. Now, it is time to focus and get to work so we can get, we can start getting the job done for our children. We would like to start a dialogue, dialogue as soon as possible with a sense of urgency. We have parents who are part of an organization that we have created. We are the Massachusetts Parents United. We have over 7,500 members across the state, specifically in the city of Boston, Holyoke, Springfield, Lawrence, and many others. And we are advocating for better education for our kids. I have the written statement for you, and I want to thank you for the time, and I would like to leave the doors open so that we can start the dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar.
That concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, and thank you for all who attended this evening to speak. Our first action this evening is the consent calendar, which consists of grants for approval totaling $1,905,422 and one international travel request. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Oliver Davila.
Yes, I had some questions on the SCL grant, and I was just curious if you could share with us the schools that are going to be receiving this money and how they were picked.
Yeah, so this is a grant for $1.5 million for, I believe, 15 schools, as I recall, yes, 15 schools just acquired.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Office of Social Emotional Learning with Dr. Nieves. My name is Kita Pottinger Johnson. Schools, we have a total of 14 schools participating. We have pilot schools, which are seven EPS schools, and seven comparable schools. The research team working on our research question, which has to do with schools coming together around the idea of social emotional learning in, in-school and out-of-school time. If we work together on that goal of infusing practices during the school day and after school, what will be the academic outcome and social outcome for young people? So those were the questions that were asked, and schools were selected in terms of their readiness to begin to infuse SCL practices across the school communities.
So the seven schools that are part of the pilot initiative are the Hennigan, the Kenny, the Alice, the Perkins, the Russell, Kilmer, and O'Donohue.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious in terms of when you say that schools are ready, I don't know all of these schools in depth, so I'm just wondering in terms of schools that maybe, I don't know what you mean by ready, so I just want to make sure in terms of schools that are chosen, that we have some schools that maybe wouldn't be on the radar because, you know, they might not be excelling in some areas, so that it's a, it's a, it's a level playing field. And then my other question is around when you say the in-school and out-of-school, does that mean that they have to have an after-school onsite, or is this an after-school that's maybe in the community?
Sure, it's a combination in terms of the out-of-school time provider. So some of the schools have an out-of-school time provider that comes to, directly to the school. In other schools, I'm thinking of the Perkins in South Boston, has a partner that's offsite, and students access that program in the community very close to the school. In terms of readiness, we are thinking about Dr. Chang's vision around Essential One, safe, healthy, and welcoming, and so folks have some elements of that in place in the school in terms of characteristics of safe, healthy, and welcoming being in place. Folks can be at different points on a continuum around that, but that there is a kind of readiness of the school community to adopt SCL practices in the school and in out-of-school time.
So then schools kind of self-selected if they wanted to be part of this, or it was a process of also picking? The reason I'm asking this question is just in terms of, we keep talking about equity, we keep talking about the achievement gaps, and just making sure that maybe some of the schools that don't always get everything because maybe they're not as savvy as some other schools, that we just have a good representation is basically my question.
Ms. Oliver Davila, let me weigh in very quickly. This grant is part of, it's a multi-year grant through the Wallace Foundation. We anticipate it's going to be a four-year, $6 million in that ballpark. We, there were a couple of things that we looked at when we selected these schools. Originally, it was going to be like four schools, but we asked for more dollars to, for more schools to be involved. We wanted to make sure that this, we wanted to use our opportunity index first, take a look at schools that were serving some of our most needy students in the city. That was number one. The second thing, we wanted to make sure we had the appropriate geographic distribution of these schools as well. In terms of readiness, we wanted to make sure that the school leaders and instructional leadership teams were, were ready to, or were open to taking on this pretty massive commitment of integrating SCL work to their academic work. And you will see all these schools are K-8 schools. The commitment was for K-8 schools, so they're integrating the SCL work with investigation and with focused on first, focused on second, it's, they're integrating it to their expedition sharing learning work. So integration of academics and SCL work is kind of uncharted territory, and so they're going to be really leading this effort. We have seven control schools that will, we won't be able to implement some of these services, it's going to get a little tricky, but after the four-year grant is over, they will actually be receiving dollars as well to really kind of ramp up their work. So, and all this is being studied by RAND, right, correctly?
Right.
We'll be saying, and it's part of a national study.
Yep.
Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, I just, you know, want to make sure, because it wasn't, that description wasn't in here, so I think as we talk about, we keep hearing about making sure there's equity, so I'm glad to hear about the needy schools and the, and the different ways that we looked at schools. So, thank you.
Superintendent, may I just, I'd like to, yes.
Just a follow-up question on the same issue. So it's those same seven schools for all four years?
Correct.
The comparable schools, and will the learnings from this be shared with others to the opportunity? Because I mean, it's a lot, it's wonderful, a lot of money, but the question about sustainability and what happens when it goes away in the next group of kids is my biggest concern. The second piece, on the place where you have the indicators, could you give some concrete examples of what this looks like? What will this mean? What will happen in the course of the day when you're integrating these SCL practices?
So I'd just like to add to what Dr. Chang started by saying, it's common language around what social emotional learning is and what the components of that, and building school staff's capacity around it to infuse it in every part of the school day. So what does social emotional learning look like on our ride into school? How do we interact with each other in the school bus? What does it look like in our academic classrooms, in terms of our ability to work together as groups within the classroom, hear each other, respond appropriately to one another in academic settings? On the recess field, when we go out to recess in the schoolyard, what does it look like there? And in our out-of-school time opportunities as well? So bringing common language, common set of practices, social emotional learning curriculum will be provided to each of the schools. The selection curriculum, most of the schools are either second step or open circle, which are ones that we are knowledgeable about as a district and have implemented those in our CBHM initiative as well. So that's really kind of what we're looking at in terms of measures, introducing these standards, building common language, building our ability to have it infuse all aspects of a student's school day. And also thinking about parent engagement around this, right? What does that look like in terms of parents being able to use the same language and access that at home as well?
Excellent. Dean Coleman?
For those of us who entered this area in the 70s, yes, I'm dating myself, this is very exciting work, but some of the mistakes I think we made in the 70s when we started this is that we didn't tie it directly in our logic models to academic outcomes. So I want to come back to the question of metrics. This is a very process-oriented, very exciting, congratulations on getting a Wallace grant that we know that's very difficult and also has upside in the future, but the need to have real clear, what's the logic model? How does this affect academic outcomes, closing the gaps? I think we're all advocating to have that really tied in directly to the, to the specific goals. So in other words, if we're having SMART goals, there's really no specific goal here that we're, a real specific measurement, a lot of process variables, all of which are very important and valuable, and no one's criticizing those, but we really need it tied into our ultimate outcome. How's this going to affect, how will we know this helps close the gap? So that, I think that needs to be consistently applied, and I'm going to come back to this and let it come second later. So one of the other questions that my colleagues started with, and I'd like to be maybe a little bit more specific, what percentage of the schools are Level III and IV? Is that representative of the number, a percentage of the III and IV schools we have in the district? So that would be an equitable distribution of the resources. So, and I understand it's an experiment, I understand that people want to start with their bright spikes in places where there's a high probability of success, but I think we're asking for, you know, at least, and if it's not, an explanation, we're not saying we have to do it, but we want more clarity about who's getting the resources, when and how, because those are the questions we could ask at the end of the day.
Excellent. We'll be happy to put together something that shares more information about what percentage are Level III and IV schools and get that back to the committee.
And what are the anticipated or predicted or desirable academic outcomes, and what's the logic model? And how will we know what's happening as you come back with each year in the progress so we can, you can reset? It's a great experiment, great idea, but as we talk about a lot, experimentation is, it's not working, how do you know? And how are you going to readjust?
Thank you. Will do.
Superintendent, I think the comments, Dean Robinson, enjoy the comment. Go ahead.
So I did want to also just piggyback what Dr. Coleman was communicating and asking even specifically the academic outcomes, but even drilling down more, will every student at the school, like how will this be distributed to particular students versus the students who aren't going to participate? And will we be able to see kind of the difference in their academic progress, their GP, you know, their grades? I, I think that would really be helpful to kind of see here, because to Dr. Coleman's point, if our goal is student success and we want it tied to SCL, we want to be able to see that student success is our students graduating, our students getting the grades necessary to really show that success academically. So could you all come back with, you know, maybe an additional goal that really does specifically speak to the number of students participating and how you'll be able to link this to their grades?
Yes, we can.
So we will have all that answered in a cover memo, and we'll accompany the grant application with it to the school committee, so you will be able to see the entire application. Actually, a lot of the metrics are in there. We'll put it in a cover memo also.
Thank you.
Superintendent, I think clearly what you and your team are probably seeing is the heightened sensitivity on this committee of both making sure that all decisions we make take equity into consideration, as well as, you know, what are we doing to use every resource we have available to close opportunity achievement gaps? So clearly something each member of this committee is touching, and I'm sure there'll be a message heard by your team in the future. I know it's, I'm preaching to the choir, I understand that. I also want, Superintendent, just from a high-level viewpoint, how many cities applied for Wallace grants? Do you know how many?
It started with 130 cities across the country.
And how many cities did they make grants to?
I'm sorry?
And how many cities did they make grants to?
Then they whittled it down to nine cities across the nation, and then from nine to six cities.
And so 130 cities applied and six were accepted? And what was the range of their grants?
Um, anywhere with, from 1,000, 200, to 1,500, I mean, 1 million, 1.2 million to 1.5 million.
Per year?
Range, per year.
For four years?
Per, right.
Each year?
Per city.
Each year, per year. And we are at the top end of that range?
We were awarded collaboratively. We were awarded collaboratively with Boston After School and Beyond, 2.2 million.
Per year for four years?
Well, that's for the first year, and then depending, it could be greater next year, or it could be less.
Okay. I just wanted to highlight this as an example because this is incremental work that the superintendent and his team has done. You know, the city provides a budget, there's state funding as well, there's a certain amount of federal funding, but then we also have outside resources, and every year built in our budget is certain assumptions. But programs can't happen unless the superintendent, you know, hits the ground and reaches out, and we have funders in the city that have helped us. But to bring in someone like the Wallace Foundation that will most likely be 2.2, including with Boston After School and Beyond for four years, 130 cities applied and six were accepted, it is a testament of the work of the superintendent and the regard of the work of social-emotional learning being done in this district that I mentioned before that is seen as a leader on the national level. So congratulations to you, Dr. Neves, and your team, and Dr. Estrada, who was assumed in doing somewhere.
And Boston After School and Beyond.
And Boston After School and Beyond, a tremendous partner to work with, absolutely, who did wonderful things with this year on the fifth quarter, and others. So congratulations on getting this. Thank you for hearing our concerns about making sure the decisions.
So I, there's one thing I forgot, I got excited. I'm more than comfortable with lagging indicators as your outcomes if they're articulated relationship to the, the leading indicators, excuse me, leading indicators, as long as we know they're the ones that do predict the lagging indicators. You know, you don't have a year, you're not going to change the level of the school in a year, but we know what the leading indicators for change are, and we just want those articulated, you know, attendance, engagement, you know, lots of numbers that we can have that are really, that are hard, but they're not necessarily, the lagging indicators of MCAS scores or levels.
This is substantial enough a grant, and will go on for multiple years and impacting such an important part of our students' work and the work of your team that I think probably about a year from now should be an agenda item of a separate presentation that would include, please follow up with us both about the questions that were raised about the percent of Level III and IV schools and some of the other questions that were raised, the specific goals. But I think this would be the type of thing that should be a separate agenda item in the future for a presentation of how is it going and what tweaks are you making in the program as it goes along.
I just ask the school committee that we work very closely with the research team to make sure that we're sharing things that are appropriate. Is there some innovative new measures that we're going to be piling in these schools? So we'll work with the research group.
Sounds great. Thanks. Any other questions or comments on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Someone.
Thank you, Dean Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any discussion objection? No objection to approving the consent calendar by unanimous consent. Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. Our final action item this evening is Superintendent Chang's performance evaluation rating for school year 2016-17. At our last meeting, Dean Robinson presented the final composite evaluation, which provides Dr. Chang with an overall rating of proficient for his second year as superintendent of Boston Public Schools. Tonight, the committee is being asked to formally adopt that rating in accordance with the process described by the state. Before I open the committee for any final comments, I would like to turn first to Dean Robinson, who coordinated this effort on behalf of us, on behalf of her fellow members. So Dean Robinson, do you have any final comments on this?
I would only like to note that as a result of our conversation in last school committee's meeting, where we were able to hear the clarifying comments from Jerry Robinson, she was able to add the changes to the evaluation that you were able to see here tonight. So I am here to just put forth the vote that the school committee hereby approves the attached final composite evaluation rating for Superintendent Chang for the 2016-2017 school year with a final overall rating of proficient.
Thank you. I'll open it up now to questions and comments from members. Dean Coleman?
No, and I want to separate my comments from responding to this evaluation, which I completely support and have no questions about, to going back to the issue that we brought up before about, as we went through this evaluation, you know, I think we will do a better service both to the superintendent and us if we really do start to articulate some SMART goals and not so much process. I thought the evaluation over focused, I wasn't here last time, so I didn't get to say this, was an over-focus on process issues, which I think are remarkable, and I want to say I think remarkable, great things are happening in the district, but as we go forward, I think as early as we can, try to articulate, well, what's the logic model here and what are the, what are the leading indicators of movement and the lagging indicators which we have to deal with? There's, you know, in the later conversation about MCAS, you know, there's little in the way, the information we had that really could tie his performance to our MCAS results by which we're, as a district, evaluated. I think we do, need to do a better job, both for us and for the superintendent. It's more of a recommending for future change than...
Thinking, Dean Coleman, it actually was an extensive part of the conversation last week.
I believe you.
No surprise. And Dean Robinson has been charged with, as we finished this year's evaluation, going right into preparing a set, working with the superintendent to prepare a setup. And I think the phrase last week was used about SMART goals, and that we'd be much earlier in the process, the SCL, in laying out some specific goals for the superintendent. So I think that will be a conversation quite shortly. Any other questions, Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes, I do everything that you've said, that's what we talked about. And my only additional comment is if we can please not do it in August, it's a hard time to do an evaluation in August. If there's a way to be creative, also an interactive evaluation as well, that would be wonderful.
By interactive, I assume you mean digital, online?
Digital, but also...
With all of the artifacts also posted that way as well?
Yes, yes, that's one. But I mean, I just, I wonder how across the country, other superintendents are being evaluated and if there's anything new besides, you know, a paper piece. I'm just curious, I don't know.
Well, in fact, Ms. Sullivan has been extremely diligent in working with the district and preparing a process that we are going to be able to go digital as a school board overall with all of our materials, our presentations, tracking our votes and everything. She has been doing a tremendous amount of work on that. That system will also allow for all of the superintendent's artifacts, et cetera, to be loaded digitally, so we could track a lot better instead of trying to interpret the handwritten circles that we did. As far as the actual evaluation process itself, we are somewhat hamstruck because of the state required process, but I think Dean Robinson and the superintendent and I and Dean Coleman have certainly have clearly heard the feedback of how much can we customize this as much as possible to Boston, including the addition of SMART goals.
And adding the component of some mid-year feedback with artifacts so that we can see progress earlier, and it will eliminate hopefully the bottleneck that we find ourselves in with receiving so much information in the summertime. So we are, we're also wanting to propose to the school committee in the next few months some mid-year check-ins with Dr. Chang. So stay tuned for that component as well. We do want to think creatively in the process.
I would also argue that if we move to a more of a focus, metric-driven evaluation system, we'll need less programmatic process information for the superintendent. So the number and the range of artifacts could shrink substantially, we're going to be able to demonstrate progress on particular leading or lagging indicators that we articulate. So it could change the whole dynamic of the information. I love reading the stuff, I love, you know, I love the details, the stuff's important to me, but I'm not sure that's really at the evaluation level, the amount of things that you really need to be looking at.
And it's critical. If we are to be a top-performing board, we should be collectively agreeing on four to six measurements that we believe, whether it's amount of pre-K seats, literacy by grade three, you know, algebra by grade eight, on-track graduation, et cetera. We should be able to agree to four to six goals that are simple to understand, that are simple to track, that show the progress in this district. We should be, that are SMART goals, obviously, that we can articulate on a regular basis and we can hold the superintendent accountable for on a regular basis, and that makes it easier to explain to parents and community members and teachers and staff in this district about what we're striving for.
Right.
And so I think that's a critical step, and I suspect the superintendent, in one of the presentations a little bit later on tonight, when he's talking about the strategic plan, will be thinking about that a little bit as well. It's a perfect place to have that conversation.
And I want to reemphasize, I think the superintendent's done an excellent job giving us the information we asked for.
Yes, right.
I'm just suggesting we should be asking for different information.
And with so much time on your hands now, Dr. Coleman, I look forward to your partnership.
Oh, but you don't understand the life of the mind.
Thank you, Dean Coleman, for that input. And actually, it would be wonderful if you could work with Dean Robinson on that and take some guidance on that, because you are always consistently a clear voice with regards to metrics, data, dashboard. And if the clearer that we could design one that we all work off of, the superintendent's team work off, and parents and students and teachers work off of as well, the better we'll be.
We'd love to watch out for you, ask.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's evaluation rating, which is in accordance with what we discussed in depth last week? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, I'm sorry, Superintendent, did you want to make any final comments about it?
Just, I appreciate the thoughtful feedback I always get, not only at the August time span, but throughout the year. So maybe we could figure out where there's just more formally recognized the feedback I do get from the school committee. I think that would be helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's final performance evaluation rating as proficient for the 2016-17 school year as presented.
Someone.
Thank you, Dean Robinson, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Estroneo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And just to state publicly for the record two things. First of all, in accordance with the superintendent's contract with the district, a proficient rating does mean that the superintendent isn't eligible for a 2%. Ms. LaCanto has been our expert on my contract, so I want to make sure you affirm that, but the superintendent is eligible for a 2% increase that would be retroactive to July 1st, the beginning of the year, in this school year. So Ms. LaCanto, we correct that? Okay, so thank you, sir. And also, on behalf of the fellow members, I want to thank Dean Robinson. This is a tremendous amount of work putting this together. It's a, almost a year-long effort, and we thank you for what you were doing on behalf of the fellow members and look forward to how we continue to improve this process in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. We'll move on now to our first report, Building an Office of External Affairs. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. McKeeva McCrery, who had been up with us before, the Managing Director and Senior Advisor of External Affairs, to kind of make the presentation. Superintendent, I invite you to make any opening comments.
Thank you so much. Dr. McKeeva McCrery, Managing Director and Senior Advisor of External Affairs, will talk to us about the growth of the new Office of External Affairs under her leadership. Dr. McCrery will share how this office is beginning to engage local business and philanthropic communities to provide support for innovative programming in an equitable way. I hope you are all looking forward to hearing about this exciting work. I turn it over to Dr. McKeeva McCrery.
My team is shy, so I had to extra encourage them to come up, but you will meet all of them shortly. Thank you for this opportunity. It's been a long time coming. This was a new office created officially last February in 2017, but I think the transition from Chief of Staff and also building while you fly has brought us to somewhere, or this somewhere, where we were able to really identify what the structure and work of the office would be. I'm going to start with a little, a little history. Some of you lived through this and worked through this, and for others of you, this might be new information, but the district has made some fits and starts at an attempt to think about private philanthropy and resources coming from external places. And a lot of other districts have done this in other ways, but not many, I should say. This is not the core business typically of an urban public school district, but the places where an outside, somebody who's focusing on bringing in outside resources has proven to be really successful where it works. And so what you'll see in the timeline that I've shared with you is that there were, there was a moment where there was one individual who was responsible for all grants and foundation work primarily under, doing work in a one-person shop. That then evolved into an attempt to really have a pure advancement person on staff, but again, with the one-person shop and without varied levels of expertise, that was something that was really hard to sustain. We talked at one point about having the partnerships office also hold advancement as a formal part of their work. I'm sure you heard presentations from the partnerships office, but they have a lot on their plate, really thinking about the delivery of service at schools and what those partners bring to the table from that perspective, but to also have to be focused on garnering resources is a heavy lift. And so that wasn't something that we thought was successful. And so we moved forward with the one program that Chairman O'Neill remembers was at one time called Adopt a School, and we found that that was really our foothold into thinking about what we were leaving out on the table, if you would. And that was really support from our corporate partners. And as the city grows and brings in all of these companies that are able to really look to us for their future workforce, we in turn have started to think about how we get them to partner with us much sooner. And that's not always from writing a check perspective, and I'll talk a little bit about that moving forward. So we launched Invest BPS as a rebranding and as a way to say, don't be overwhelmed. You don't have to take on an entire school as your responsibility to be a partner for us. You might do a day of service, you might help us think about a product that your company has an expertise in and how our teachers might use that, or you might write a check. And we welcome that as well. We created a digital platform for entry points for Invest BPS, and again, I will share a little bit more about that later. Moving forward, just as a little preview, we also have been thinking about engagement in its many forms, and we are calling those campaigns right now, for lack of a better term, but you can imagine that there are lots of different ways that we can partner with both our alumni, but also parents or grandparents or business owners that are local in the community, and also with our school leaders. So we envision that there will be other ways to continue to bring folks along and keep them up to pace with the work of the district. Build BPS, as you all know, will be a multi-faceted approach to rebuilding the district. It will take more than just one type of resource, and so our office will be focusing on identifying ways that we can support those efforts as well. The last endeavor that we have for this season, I would say before January, is tied to our commitment for accountability and transparency, and that's a dashboard that I'll show you a visual of later. It's in beta right now, and we've been really fortunate to have a partner in fidelity to help us think about building that. When we first talked about establishing this office, I also did a bit of a listen-and-learn tour with our philanthropic partners who were already existing. And what we heard was, wholeheartedly, why hasn't this happened yet? Why haven't you given thought to how to organize your work? So that we aren't always wondering how the operating budget is going to support all of the work of the district, particularly when there are so many companies and so many philanthropic agencies that are saying, we want to help, we just don't know how. It can be incredibly intimidating to enter into a school district and to figure out what your foothold is. We don't, we don't make it easy, unfortunately. So also, a lot of this work is making that easy and opening the door to those conversations. The vision of the district is framed currently as follows, that our students are the leaders, scholars, entrepreneurs, advocates, and innovators of tomorrow. And I just reframe that for you because much of what I'll talk about in terms of our work is in an effort to support that belief. We bring three qualities, I would say, to our work. One is really pushing forward on this idea of transparency, over-communicating and being accountable for every dollar, every resource, every hour that is coming into the district in support of our students and teachers. We have a very, very careful lens on equity. We know that we have some central office departments, and we have some school leaders, and we have some communities that are really good at doing this work, and we have others for whom it does not come as easily. And that's important to note. It's not something that we necessarily put in the job description of a school leader when they come to work for a district. We don't say, you need to figure out how to, you know, make sure that you're partnering with everybody who surrounds you. with everybody who surrounds you. So we also want to make sure that we're teaching. And my team likes to say, you know, teaching how to fish, teaching how to, how to learn the skill sets in a way that's comfortable for you, both as a school leader or a central office department, to identify the resources you need, and then let us help you make those connections. And last, but certainly not least, is that we know that our work is squarely focused on closing the opportunity gap. We know that we have partners who are focusing very diligently on the achievement gap. The opportunity gap absolutely exists for our students and, and from my perspective, really doesn't need to. There are so many amazing experiences that our city has to afford and offer our young people. And we want to make sure that we aren't leaving certain groups of young people out of that We are all asked when we do a presentation to think about what our equity impact statement is. That was easy for us because we really do believe that if we are charged with ensuring that as students leave our doors, they have another door to walk into out into the, the world. We want them to be full of agency. We want them to have an expectation that that is the work that we're doing. And I've had the pleasure of working with the Mayor's Office of Education and collaborating on lots of different ways that we really welcome our, our business partners into the schools in the ninth grade, the 10th grade, giving our teachers experiences while they're teaching with us to understand what that workforce, skill set might look like down the line. We do think that also there is a category of students who we would easily sort of leave to the side because accessibility to these experiences might be not as easy to see as for others. And I'll explain that with an example in a moment. But we really do want to make sure that our work focuses on removing those barriers. Recently, the superintendent and a lot of other colleagues launched this idea of college career and life readiness. And you'll see the visual to the right that I think you're becoming familiar with, which is absolutely phenomenal, the idea that there are agreed-upon approaches to a successful student reaching their fullest potential through their experience with our school district and also with all of the surrounding agencies. But there are some of our young people who need the toolkit to get to the bottom of the mountain, right? A lot of our kids end up on that path, maybe not easily, but they'll get there. What about those young people who don't quite know where that path starts? And so our work is huge, all of our work in this district, and we knew that we had to figure out how to filter where we would start, where we would take our first bite, if you would, out of the apple. And so we've decided that it's actually identifying what those toolkits are, removing those barriers, so that the opportunity gap can shrink and that we can make sure that that's an equitable distribution of experiences for our young people. Three examples that I'll share with you are listed on this slide. One is, I'll start with Guppy Tank, which just happened last week. Not Shark Tank, but our middle schoolers, our sixth graders, were brought into a partnership with Building Impact and TUG. They were placed in 50 different companies across the city, and they got a chance to work with professionals who were in the tech industry, come up with pitches, deliver those pitches to a panel of judges. And it was just tremendous. It was phenomenal. But for me, one of the most heartwarming and gratifying visuals that I have is witnessing students from the McKinley School go to Toast, which I won't start to explain what all these companies do because it, it took a long time for me to learn. But they had the most phenomenal time. They were able to walk there, so they know that this company is in their neighborhood where their school is. They were able to access all of the information. I walked into one of the rooms that they were ideating in. They were building a meditation app. You know, this to me proves that there really doesn't need to be any barriers to all of our students having a Guppy Tank experience. So, and, and it was intentional, I should say. It would not have necessarily happened without intention. The other way that this is coming to life is the Carter School. We're partnering with them to do some parent focus groups with an organization called Exceptional Lives. And Exceptional Lives has an online digital platform that builds a toolkit, if you would, for parents that they can help navigate through their experience with their children who have a varying degrees of special needs. The Carter Schools, you know, has parents with children who enter our system with some of the more challenging special needs. And so we are going to be able to build a platform specifically for parents who have similar questions about the most fragile, the most complicated ways of navigating all of these different systems in the city for their children. And then last but not least, More Than a Mile is a partnership that we have with BU Spark, which is the computer science program at BU for undergraduate students. They agreed to build us an app. The app has been downloaded on about 30 phones that are held by what I'm calling our street team, and we have three representatives here from our street team, and I'll introduce you in a moment. And they are fellows for the Office of External Affairs, and they're testers for us. And so these students are testing out an app that gives them credit for going more than a mile from their home, checking into an experience, and creating a transcript on the back end of that app that says, congratulations, you've earned a government badge, you went to the debate, the mayoral debate last week. I have to say that we had a most generous opportunity. Hub Week gave us 30 all-access passes for our students to check into any of the events during that week. And a few of our students were, actually, all of the students who are here went and did that, and their schools released them a little bit early from class so that they could partake. And they never would have had that experience prior because it's cost prohibitive. And frankly, I don't even know that I knew a whole lot about Hub Week before this year. So that's another way that we've found a really low barrier removal, so that we make sure that young people get out and see what the city has to offer. Our structure is as follows, and I mentioned this earlier. We're really focused on any way of engaging our external stakeholders, corporate and foundation management, data management, special initiatives. We have a lot of technical assistance capacity, and we are always thinking about how we can be more accountable. This is our organizational chart. You'll see across the top that there are no names against categories of work. That's because we all do everything, some of us a little bit more of other things. But I truly believe that all of us are able to code-switch, if you will, against engagement or foundation work or capacity building. I would love to introduce my team briefly, and they can just wave from behind me. Ferkins Jennifer Reed is working very closely with all of our departments on foundation relations and management. Nadia Harden is our newest member of the team, and she is focused on engagement campaigns. And Tess Atkinson, who's been, she's our senior member of the team. I think she's been with Boston Public Schools for three years now? Three, three and a half years. She is my Deputy Chief of Staff and all-around project manager. Hannah Wilson is out on maternity leave, but we're waving to her from here. She just had a baby. And she's responsible for Invest BPS. Sonia DePina, who's with us, yeah, Sonia, is squarely focused on our partnership with Vertex, which is actually supported through their grants to us, and then myself. And so that's, we're, we're pretty nimble. We've managed to figure out also how to leverage a lot of our partnerships externally to get a lot of work done, which is exciting. I won't go into a lot of detail on this slide, but I'm happy to answer questions about any of these projects as we move forward. At the end of my presentation, I will just say that I think it's important to know that for us, our work is aligned against the six major priorities that the superintendent has identified in the college career and life readiness model. And so you'll see us try to find one home for pieces of work that we're doing, but frankly, many of them cross over into other categories of work. In terms of the, the traditional sort of philanthropic support that the district gets, and I say that because we don't have a good way of separating the foundation world from the corporate foundation world or the marketing dollars that may support initiatives. But if you think of our, our closer friends who have been with the district for a long time and who work really closely with individual departments on initiatives, what we are doing, and this is primarily the work of Ferkins Reed, is to think about how we get tighter on systems. And so to that end, we've invested in Salesforce for not only our team, but also for the partnerships team. And it also has the ability to speak to the Boston Education Development Fund, so that now if I sit down with a funder, I can actually tell you the story of your giving historically, which I really couldn't have done before now. We also have been able to build in a tool to capture, and we haven't quite figured out a measure of the, what the metric is against this yet, but to capture what the value is of service and to capture what the value is of a skills-based volunteering experience. So if you're from the financial industry and you spend five hours with a school leader helping them think about a different way of structuring their dollars, we want to count that and we want to, we want to say thank you, but we really want to capture that because it's tremendous. It shouldn't just be about the checks that are written. And so that's really important to us. Invest BPS, I mentioned earlier. This is just an example. Please know that there are companies that are probably not on this list that absolutely have been engaging with us, but these are just a few that I was able to call out between last winter and most recently. And it is a digital experience now, which we think should prove to be an easier entry point for corporate partners. You can identify whether you're interested in the arts, math, whether you like elementary, middle, high school, whether you have a particular neighborhood or geography that your company would like to invest in. You can also tell us if you'd rather sit at a large table with a number, another, a number of other funders, or whether you would like to be a part of a new initiative that's sort of the genesis of your own agency. One of the things that we've also had to do is figure out what we're not going to do. And I think that's important to call out. We have so many generous individuals and companies that want to participate with us in service experiences. And what we decided pretty early on was that there are already existing organizations that do this really well. And what we can do is we can facilitate being clear on what the needs are for our schools, but we want to rely on those organizations to help manage that day and that experience. And it's not something that we really have the capacity to take on. Where we do want to have the capacity is maybe two or three times a year around really fundamental activities. And for example, we opened school with a district day of service, which was eight corporations that partnered with three organizations that do this incredibly well, over 13 different sites, and we had about 140 volunteers. We really couldn't have done that alone. It, it was the difference between schools being able to open their doors prepared within a four-day span of time, as opposed to all of us getting out there and figuring out how you get schools opened over a three-week period of time while also trying to do professional development and onboarding new teachers and, and new school leaders. So it was a really wonderful experience, and we knew that that was sort of the, the limit to where we should play in that space. This is an example of the dashboard that Fidelity is building with us. Currently, actually, the middle section is real. We actually populated that with some real data from a donor. But on the left side, you would see an experience where you would be able to log in as an individual. You would be able to see collectively where your company with many other employees maybe have contributed, so it'll be an aggregate story. You'll be able to see where you benchmark against peers in the same industry. And in the middle, you can tell that there's a filter. It's kind of fuzzy, but you can toggle on and off to understand if your dollars, if you toggle on a subject area, where your dollars have gone. If you toggle on a geography and you want to lay that over, where have you given to ELA, and in what schools, and in what parts of the city. But we also want to tell you a story about where it's needed, and that's one of the filters that we're working on integrating, so that you can make a decision and you can, we don't have to, you know, tell you the story. You can actually kind of see the story for yourself. On the right side, we will always have sort of a static, this is what's coming up, these are the things we're focusing on. And on the bottom, we want to tag all of our donors against topic areas that we will then have school leaders and schools supporting by telling good stories, telling the positive stories, making sure people know that it's making a difference. And so we're really excited about this. We think it will happen before January. We have a street team that I mentioned before, and I promise you that there's also a visual with a young lady in front, not just a guy. But we, with the help of the Boston Foundation, Gratz Roots, Action Fund, and Vertex, have been able to identify enough funding to support an actual paid fellowship for about 18 students. We have another 12 that are coming to support efforts but not quite as, not able to make quite the level of commitment. And it's wonderful because they really are our marketing agents. They are going to be able to test the things that we, you know, say are great ideas and tell us the truth. They're going to be able to tell us what they're waiting to experience. We had a really interesting time at Hub Week, and so I can tell you anecdotally some of the things that happened after this presentation, but we learned a lot. And I don't think as an adult I could have had the same experience, nor could I have conveyed what I wanted to learn about in the same ways that those young people did. So I just want to make sure that we say hi to Sophia, Frederico, and Leona. Okay. And thanks, guys, for being here tonight. I know you have to get back to your studies soon, so we'll wrap this up quickly. The Fall Open House I mentioned earlier, really excited about that. And here's just an example of the samplings of different workshops and presenters that will be there. And now I'll sort of close down with the place that we have spent, that we're moving towards spending a lot of time, and we need some more help to think about this, but know it's critical, is how we set our goals, how we measure our work against those goals, what metrics we're going to be able to use. And so I call out for you that, again, we are, we are honoring both the dollars that come in, but also the time and the skills-based talent. And we've already seen places where that's going to make a tremendous impact for our students. We also have, I've talked to you about Salesforce. We know that based on what we've already received in the last just short period of time that we've been working and, and being collaborative, that we're setting an aggressive goal, but we think it's actually a realistic one, that over the next three years, we should be able to garner an additional $15 million of support for the district across those three categories. So we know that in the spring, there's going to be a boot camp experience that's being hosted by one of our corporate partners for 20 students, where they'll get an intensive STEM experience. The value of that is tremendous. And then those students will have an opportunity to have a much more successful STEM internship over the summer because they will have gotten the skill sets that they need in that short period of time, an intensive period of time. And so that's where we stand. I am working with United Way to help me think about what they already know in this space. And I know that there's some other folks out there that have already wrestled with how you quantify the intangibles and the gifts that come through this kind of experience. Last but not least, coming soon, we will have a website, and so I will make sure to send that to all of you. It will have an opportunity for alumni engagement. It will hold Invest BPS. We will be able to tell stories of our street team, and we will be able to constantly keep people updated on the work over the district. I close with our mission statement, and I, I won't read this to you, but I do want to just share one line of it that I think is incredibly important, which is, our core belief is that equity is at the cornerstone of transforming education. That is absolutely what what drives all of our work. And when we need a filter to say, are we going to participate in this? Are we going to take this on and incubate it? Or are we going to have to let it go to the wayside? That really is the thing that I use for my filter. Is this going to get an equitable distribution of resources out to our schools in a way that hasn't happened before? And there are so many opportunities. It's really tremendous that you really do need to ask that question, I find, every single time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCurry, and to the whole team that joined this evening. Open up now to questions and comments. Ms. Alveda.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And I love the student piece. That's awesome. Love it. I think there's a lot of really great work here. I'm really excited. I'm wondering about some of the opportunities. You know, you talked about the different internships. And so, you know, there's a difference between like the partnership office and what you're doing, but I'm wondering in terms of how will you also involve external organizations that are also doing this? Because, you know, just in terms of some of the things that are already happening, so that we're not like double doing stuff, and how we can just work together more closely and how you kind of envision that?
We don't have a perfect science yet. We actually are struggling with this question even just between our office and some of the offices at City Hall. What we're finding is that the more that we can just get everybody into the same room and have an honest discussion about which lanes we're really good at and which lanes we should hand over. So you can imagine, I mean, the PIC is in the room with the Office of Economic Development, with my team, with Latino STEM Alliance, for example. And we kind of have to sit there and say, all right, to the end that we've all agreed on, which is that we need to ensure our young people are getting into pipelines, who's going to take what? I've found that it's a little onerous, because there's no real way to do this simply, but there's absolutely no territory, territoriality, is that a word? You get my, there's no, nobody's saying, I'm not going to share. Everybody's saying, I want to do what I can do really well, and I just don't want to let this piece drop. So as long as somebody else can catch it, we're happy.
Yeah, that's great. I just want to make sure, because I know that was a perfect example of different organizations doing. So I think we obviously are stronger together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alveda. Dean Robinson.
Thank you. This is such great work. And when I see partnerships, I just get excited because I think about the specific partnerships and their impact on our kids. So, thank you. Thank you for the team. I know this has probably been a whirlwind of a year to assemble and do the work. I guess my question is, what would be your wish list for us as school committee members? How we can help support this work? Is it helping to tell the story in donor relations? Is it volunteering? What would be the top three things that you or any of your team members have discussed to say, you know, we can support the work?
Right, top of mind is this idea that we have a lot of young people who want to have summer experiences that are meaningful and high quality. And we're defining those in some different ways right now. But what we have had to acknowledge is that they're not quite ready for those experiences if we don't give them some extra during the school year. And we're not quite sure what that treatment is, like what that dosage needs to look like. So I would say where we could use a lot of help is as we identify what happens for them in the summer, we need to be able to come back to you and say, we need partners who are willing to give us their time in February vacation and in spring vacation, or maybe on Saturdays, to help us build that supplemental curriculum and to deliver it. Because frankly, the people who are doing this work every day, they know what we don't know. They know what it needs to look like. So we want our young people to know how to show up, you know, dressed appropriately and engaging with eye contact and, you know, happy to do anything they're asked to do. But we also want them to feel successful when we say, hey, we're going to ask you to, you know, learn how to code a new program for Alexa and teach her how to, you know, follow some new commands. It's not a good experience if they don't have the content to be prepared to do that. So we would come to you with a wish list, I think, of folks that you might be able to help us build that supplemental experience with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. McCurry and your team. I just want to highlight, you know, we talk quite a bit, you and I, about the work that you're doing here. And I think it's so vital to the system, particularly because it hits upon the three primary goals of the system, or primary goals of the administration system, which is equity, coherence, and innovation. And I think the coherence piece is the one that stands out, not, you know, not to have equity or innovation play second fiddle, but, you know, certainly thinking about, you know, where you went back to the comment that this type of fundraising and this type of partnership building is not in the job description of our school leaders. And frankly, it's not in the job description of a lot of our district leaders. And so, you know, it was something where it was catch as catch can for many years. And many school leaders were either left to their own devices, where they just frankly didn't have the time to build these skills, or even if they did have those skills, they might be only working in their own limited networks. And so, you know, thinking about how we more equitably distribute the resources that we can really leverage as an entire district and work, you know, across all industries and funders in the city is a really powerful tool. And so, you know, I think it's great that this is happening and that, you know, you folks have done such a great job in putting it forward in a way that's easily understood. I mean, I know a lot of college-level higher education funding operations that don't provide the type of funder dashboards that you're speaking to. And so that's a very powerful selling point for going to a corporation and saying, you know, we want your money, but we also want to show you exactly how we're going to use it, too. So I think, you know, this is very, very, very encouraging. I'm glad to see that you put out there that you want to come back to us and report on specific items in the future, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Ms. Robinson.
Yes. Thank you so much for this presentation. Question I have, I know the importance of STEM, particularly in the opportunities that we're looking for for our older students, but when I think about Boston and all of the other organizations, particularly cultural organizations, et cetera, that I'm not quite sure how well-engaged they are with the district, and knowing for while working in those fields, how underrepresented they are of students of color. And so the question is, how are we also getting some of the other kinds of organizations in Boston that may not always be at the table, also beyond, you know, come for a quick visit? But how do we begin to think about getting those organizations involved in getting some of our students out into our city in a different way when they're younger, so that they're not so surprised by what they find as they get older? Because we have this incredible city that people come from all over the world from. But what is, I keep saying, what is the Boston birthright to our students around the riches of this city and their opportunities from the time, in kindergarten, as we talk about opportunity gaps? Those are the opportunity gaps I'd like to see us start closing from day one.
So the last line in my mission statement is that the city is a classroom. It's our classroom. And an example of what you just described may not drill down to elementary quite yet, but there's an experiment taking place at Excel in partnership with the Young Peoples Project. And they're teaching, they're building, co-creating a curriculum with teachers that will then be delivered in a month to the high school students on how to code. Those high school students are then creating a boot camp for middle school students that they will deliver in the spring across 50 middle school classrooms. That's the way that I think things like that could happen. I think that there's a powerful transference across all of the sort of generations of teachers that we have in our schools. And I could see a world in which those middle school students iterate in the same way and take those sort of learnings and say, hmm, how do we make this accessible for a third grader? And LEGO Education is an example of a fabulous partner. It has really helped us think about what STEM looks like for the little ones. And the Matter Hunt actually is getting a lovely contribution pretty soon of STEM kits for, what, two and three and four-year-olds. Like, it's really fantastic. So we need to do more of that, and I'm glad you highlighted that as well.
Yes, sir. Great. Thank you. So, Dr. McCurry, I'm thrilled by this presentation tonight, I have to tell you. I'm looking at a timeline that happens to go back 11 years. It's a little hard for me, since I'm coming up on 10 years on the committee, so I remember just about every single thing on here. And Dean Robinson talked about what would be a wish list for school committee members. And I think since I have joined this committee, having an operation like this has been very high on my wish list, because I have seen this as one of the biggest unfilled, unmet needs that we, unmet possibilities that we have. I talked earlier about city-state federal funding, and that last piece is what we raise, and the superintendent and the team and the city and the district raises. And our potential on this is huge. As you know, well know, I've been saying this for 10 years now, but to me, this is the most thorough, thorough and thought-filled approach on this that we have done in the 10 years that we've talked about it. And so I really applaud you and your team for the work that is going on. I want to mention three particular things. One is, I'm sure Ms. Robinson and I look up for signing, look forward to signing up as alumni of Boston Public Schools. We will sign up.
Ty, you're going Tyve?
I'm sorry?
You're going Tyve?
I said alumni. I understand what Tyve means, yes. I will also say that, as you point out, there are various ways to give to the district of time, talent, and treasure. And I think no one could question the time and the talent that Ms. Robinson and I give to this district.
We're talented, too.
Absolutely. That we all give, right, that the school committee gives. But I say that because, as you all know, some schools are very good at shaking their graduates upside down and getting the spare change out of their pockets. And we know what schools in Boston do that very, very well, right, Ms. Sullivan? But there's a huge opportunity here, for we have had many graduates of Boston Public Schools, not necessarily from Latin School or Latin Academy, that have done extraordinarily well. And when I've talked with some of them about have they ever supported us, the answer I always get back is I've never been asked. And so I know you're trying to tackle that, and more importantly, to get to the point Mr. LaCanto raised, you know, we have some school leaders that are very, very good at it. We don't want to disrupt their efforts and the networks they put together. But this is a perfect example of, you know, teach a person a fish and they eat for a lifetime. This is a skill set we need to nurture and help develop in school leaders for those who don't have the time or the expertise or have never done this. So we want to nurture that, but we also want to help from a district viewpoint. And so, trying to reach out to graduates of Boston Public Schools who have done well and want to share back is great. The second is, there is a huge desire, you have a great list of corporations on here, but Boston has become an extraordinarily wealthy city. And there are folks in high-tech, in biotech, in venture funding, in hedge funds, in financial services that have done extraordinarily well, many of whom are trying to start foundations and are trying to help and are trying to support. Perfect example, you know, we haven't found a better partner to work with in the past couple of years in the Shah Foundation that is helping us on a particular need and has been extraordinarily generous about how to get fresh foods to our students. And that, again, is another untapped network. They're not graduates of our district, but they live in this city. They hire people. They see that having a strong school system and great graduates, they're going to feed the economic engine going forward, and they want to help us. So having a thoughtful, concerted effort in how we reach out to them is critical. And I see that you're doing that. I want to continue to encourage you along that path, and you and your team. But the last point I want you to think about is sustainability. And actually, I do want to mention, not to throw the gauntlet out too far, when we talk about fundraising, both from alumni and from folks in the city that have done well and want to share the wealth and create opportunities for our students. The superintendent and I had a nice chat the other day with the superintendent of Miami. Miami holds an annual superintendent's gala. They raise between $4 and $5 million a year for the district, for the superintendent to make investments in certain programs that can't be covered by regular funding. Miami's a lot bigger than us, but that wealth exists in Boston, and I think we can do it. And there's plenty of fundraising for private schools. There's plenty of fundraising for Catholic schools. And I know the desire is there. If we have a concerted effort with a lot of transparency, I know the desire is there to help Boston Public Schools, and I know you and your team can be successful in putting that together. Whether it's a gala, whether we do something else, there's a huge opportunity here. The last place I want to talk about is sustainability. This committee passed a policy a number of years ago, I was the only member still on, that when we talked about accepting grants, like the Wallace Grant that we talked about tonight, like the Smith Grant that we heard about earlier, we talked about sustainability and that there should always be a plan. Those grants run out. Corporations change their priorities. Family foundations come up with different focus. They all love to seed fund new ideas, but then they expect the district to pick it up. And many times we can't, and we have to make many difficult decisions, and that becomes very hard. And so I really encourage you and your team in all conversations with potential funders, particularly when they come to us with the next bright idea. And let's never forget to put it through the prism that many people want to partner with Boston because we are a named district. And they love to go to other districts and say, we're working with Boston. And I know you're sensitive to that fact, but I wanted to say that publicly. But think long and hard when someone comes with the next bright idea, that it doesn't take us away from equity, coherence, and innovation, as the superintendent talks about, as Mr. LaCanto pointed out, that it fits within the strategic goals that we have set. And most importantly, how is this going to be sustainable? Because the pain of programs that we start because of funding, and when that funding goes away, we have to make this difficult decisions on. And I cringe at the thought of being here four years from now and talking about seven schools that have to stop SEI learning because the Wallace money has run out, or some difficult decisions that had been made, as we heard earlier today, about a grant that ran out over time. Think about sustainability in your conversations and just, it's better to have that conversation upfront with potential funders than run into a lot of pain later.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm not sure if you have any comments about that last issue in particular.
Well, one of the things that I personally struggled with when this was sort of germinating in my mind was the idea of how we decide what we are going to support with all of our energy and what we will not. And I think having the framework of the six priorities that have been set forward was incredibly helpful. I would also say that it's pretty easy for me, as a leader of this team, to know that, for example, excellence for all is, you know, one of the priorities that we need to make sure is sustainable, but it's already here. So I don't need anything, any new bells and whistles. Like, I know that before we can get to the bells and whistles, we have some core pieces of work that are, the district has already made a commitment to, that we would want to focus our energies on. I think Build BPS also gives the lens of saying, if it fits into our approach on high school redesign and helps us think about what the classrooms should offer for the future, if it falls into saying yes to those things, then we can entertain it. But if it's this idea that falls, you know, well out of the realm of anything that we've already identified as priorities, then, you know, it's easy to say no, thank you. It really, it feels like that is true. But I have seen that in past experiences in other lives, absolutely, where an organization takes on a chunk of work that is outside of mission because the opportunity is there. And it can be devastating, and I don't, I don't want to contribute to that. So I hear you.
And I encourage you, I'm sure you were listening closely when this committee was talking about the grant for SEI, and was questioning the team about how are you making equitable decisions on this, and how are these decisions going to close opportunity achievement gaps for our students? I trust you and your team will take that same prism to every conversation, every decision made, and make sure that folks you talk to know that that is a top priority of this committee and of district leadership overall.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. So thank you for the work that you're all doing. Incredibly important. So, thank you for the work that you're all doing, incredibly important, 10 times better than everything, anything, any start we've seen on this before.
Thank you.
You're biting off a lot, but it's critical, and the opportunity is there, and the opportunity to really make a difference for our students is huge. So, thank you for the work that you're all doing. We'll move on now to our next report, which is the end-of-year performance results for school year 2016-17. At this time, I'd like to invite Director of Data and Accountability, Nicole Wagner-Lamb. Please step forward with her presentation. First, I invite Superintendent Chang to give any opening remarks.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman. The next two presentations are going to be pretty interconnected. The first is on the district's 2017 MCAS scores, and the second is going to be an update on the Strategic Implementation Plan. And both presentations provide snapshots into our ongoing efforts of some of our deepest work in making sure all of our students are prepared for college career and life, and we're closing opportunity achievement gaps. The first one is obviously around our MCAS results. I want to make some initial points before we actually get into the data. Number one, I want to remind the public and this school committee that this year's scores for grades K through eight are the results of a new assessment. The new assessment is called Next Generation MCAS and creates a new benchmark for college and career standards. This new assessment requires all of us to actually reset our expectations and will push us to figure out new methods to accelerate student performance. As you probably heard, statewide results for Meets and exceeding expectation was at 50%, which was a lot lower than parents may have been expecting, but we really want to reiterate to parents and young people that this does not mean that they know less or they're learning less, it's just a reset of expectations. Secondly, it's important to note that this year, we had a very limited time to analyze the information. The state released the data to the school districts on an embargoed basis on Monday of last week, and gave us 48 hours to look at the data and analyze it before it was actually publicly released, and we typically have two, three weeks to do this. There was an enormous amount of data to analyze, and because of that, please just note that this is just some initial analysis of this information. We hope to have better analysis and understanding of this data over time. And I don't think this should surprise everybody, because it is a reset of expectations and kind of benchmarking year, so for the state, they felt that didn't require so much as much time for school districts to do this deep analysis before they publicly released it. But 48 hours, including sleep time, was not very much time for the office and the accountability to kind of crunch a lot of numbers. And lastly, before we jump into the data, I want to make a comment about the performance meter work that we did last year as part of our Strategic Implementation Plan. The performance meter was a set of data metrics, 14 key performance indicators that we were going to use to measure our growth as a school system. It was at the back of our Strategic Implementation Plan. And upon reflection, and I want to share this publicly, I think we have to reset that work. A couple of reasons why we have to reset the work of the key performance indicators, and this kind of goes, harkens back to some of the comments from the school committee about my evaluation. We've struggled in this school system and across the state to really try to understand how do we compare this year's data with previous year's data. The performance meter that we created used a composite performance index for five of the 14 KPIs. And we looked at gaps in CPI among racial groups, that we were really putting a big emphasis on achievement gaps. But the CPI no longer exists. We are, the state's really moving towards more scale scores. Secondly, the second comment about the performance meter, the performance meter included indicators that were a little bit too ambitious to actually measure. We have, for example, a KPI that was not fully developed called "Resources Are Equitably and Strategically Investing in Schools." We were hopeful that we could figure out a good way of measuring that, but it just became too difficult to create and very difficult to measure. And so, I've actually asked our team to reset our work around our KPI, given that we have new data metrics in, at the state level, and that we just need some more simple, and as Chairman Neal said, simple, more elegant, more, it has to be just easy to understand. Here are some data metrics that we're going to hold ourselves accountable, I'm going to hold myself accountable to, as superintendent. So, we're resetting that work. We're going to be bringing that back to the school committee very, very soon, but it will have new achievement data points that will be measured, that will be aligned to the state's new assessment system, a system, sorry, the new, the state's new assessment system. It will also have indicators like attendance and suspension, which we closely do monitor, but we didn't put in our performance meter. And ultimately, this performance meter, when we finalize it, we'll bring it back to the school committee. It will prioritize MCAS achievement, it will prioritize college career readiness standards, it will make sure that we are reducing opportunity achievement gaps, it will make sure that we're examining whether our students are being on track for graduation, and so, we'll have that to you. And I think that's just, all that just to kind of underscore, there's a lot of data we should be looking at, but we want to have something really simple and elegant to hold ourselves accountable to. And today, you'll only hear a kind of very small part of how we're holding ourselves accountable, which is MCAS scores, which are all based on standardized tests. So, I will turn it over to Nicole Wagner-Lamb, our Executive Director for Data and Accountability, who will give us a very high-level presentation around our MCAS results from just last year.
Thank you, Dr. Chang, and thank you, members of the school committee, for having me this evening. Your comments were right on, Dr. Chang, in terms of the fact that there is a lot of data, and we are still spending time analyzing it. So, tonight, we are going to start with looking at the grades three to eight MCAS results, and, you know, I'm going to try to be as concise as possible to give you all a chance to ask questions. But as Dr. Chang mentioned, this is definitely a new test that has been administered in spring 2017, and it is aligned to more rigorous standards. Actually, our Massachusetts educators themselves were the ones who set these standards and raised them to make sure that our students would be college and career ready. So, this past year's test results will serve just as a baseline. We do expect scores to change over time, but differences from prior years, we really, we really aren't making those comparisons. But for those who may sort of want to make those comparisons, we really encourage folks to know that any differences with prior years does not mean that students learned less, we're not growing. It's really just a different way of measuring our students' readiness for the next grade level. As most of you know, the state has been transitioning to online testing for, we even did that as Park was administered. This past year, 60% of BPS students in grades three to eight tested online. In this coming year, we'll have even more. But the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did something really different this year, which was not accomplished when the state administered Park, which is that they statistically controlled for any differences between the scores of students who took the test online or on paper and pencil, and we've had some conversations about that in the past. So, as you can see here, the overall results for grades three to eight math and ELA, essentially 31% of students in BPS were meeting or exceeding expectations in those two areas along each grade level. You do see a little bit of variation by grade level, but it's pretty consistent. And some of that is because the tests themselves were designed at the exact same time, and the test makers themselves were really meaning to make sure that each test in each grade level was very comparable in terms of difficulty. But also, the fact that these assessment results don't look that different by grade level is a result of the standard setting or the cut point setting process that happened this past August in Danvers, Massachusetts, where expert educators from Massachusetts came together and they went item by item through the test that students had already taken, and decided, you know, for a student who's meeting expectations, how would they have done on this item? They went item by item. But there was some effort to kind of smooth out any considerable differences that were found across grade levels, so that we could, you know, reasonably expect that a student who was meeting expectations, for example, in English Language Arts in third grade this past year, when they go on to fourth grade next year, assuming that they continue to progress in their ELA learning in terms of grade level standards, that they would be, we would be able to reasonably expect them to be meeting expectations again next year. So, you can see here, there's a, there's a lot of data here, but this slide sets up essentially how our students did across grades three to eight in English Language Arts. And you'll see that we've broken it out by the major student subgroup categories that we typically report. And in the middle, you'll see these bars that essentially describe the distribution of scores across the performance levels. And you can see that the performance levels are exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. You'll see there's a blue dot in the center, or somewhere in that bar, which is actually telling us the proportion of students in the state that were meeting or exceeding expectations in each one of those groups, and that helps you to compare to the column just to the left of those bars, which is the proportion in BPS who met or exceeded expectations. You can see that, you know, we definitely have some considerable achievement gaps that have persisted, but if you move to the right of those distributions, you'll see that, as Dr. Chang talked about, the state is now publishing average scaled scores. Really, I see it as a replacement for the composite performance index. This is, again, a pretty granular measure, it's telling us a lot more about, on average, where students scored in the distribution of possible scores. And we also, however, the state has continued to calculate median student growth percentiles. So, that is one piece of data that we can see how it, how we did this year as compared to last year. So, you'll see that, you know, the student, median student growth percentile for all students was 46 in English Language Arts, which is compared to the state, which is essentially a 50, the state, because that measure is relative to all other students in the state. The state is always dead on 50. And you see that even in our student growth percentiles, there were some gaps between subgroups, but those are, those are not necessarily completely perfectly aligned with the gaps that you'd see in more absolute achievement measures like average scaled scores, or even a percent meeting or exceeding expectations. One interesting point is that you'll see, you know, for example, a difference of about five scaled score points, we see that, for example, African-American and black students, their average scaled score was 484, but for all students, it was 489. So, that's about a gap of five points, right? That roughly translates to a 10% difference in meeting or exceeding expectations. And so, you'll kind of see that throughout the table, that these scaled scores kind of result in meeting expectations differences that are, that are bigger. And so, and so, that's how that works. Here, we're looking at math for grades three to eight, and you'll again see it broken out by the different subgroups. One thing that you'll notice is that our median SGP in math across these grade levels was actually lower than in ELA, so the median SGP is 41 here. But we definitely have some really bright spots. We see that our former English learners, for example, 51% of them were meeting or exceeding expectations in mathematics, which we know that our former English learners perform well, that they perform very well in mathematics, and that's in comparison to 43% across the state. So, that definitely shows that we have some areas where our students are really doing well. You will see that the gaps in meeting expectations seem to be even a little wider in mathematics than in English Language Arts. And so, yeah, if you have more specific questions about that, let me know. Next, I wanted to share with you a comparison, and this is a comparison that the state is showing as well, which is between the performance level distribution or results for fourth-grade math. Here, we have math, but we have English Language Arts in your appendix, it looks very similar. But fourth-grade math and eighth-grade math, and these are two grade levels that are, that we also test in NAEP. So, our most recent NAEP results were from 2015, and as you can see, the distribution of results in Next Generation MCAS, which is the left-hand bar, is very similar to our distribution of results in terms of proficiency on NAEP. And so, given the fact that the state is one of the highest-performing states, or the highest-performing state in terms of this nation's report card, which definitely has a very high standard, a college and career readiness is the NAEP standard as well, and Boston Public Schools is one of the highest-performing urban districts, I really feel that this serves to show that our Next Generation MCAS assessment is really measuring the same things as our NAEP assessment in terms of a very high bar of college and career readiness. Some additional data that we wanted to bring was that we do not, we do have data in terms of how other urban school districts in Massachusetts did as well. And so, you can see the columns here, we have the grade levels on the left and the subgroups on the right. You see a column for the state, the column for USN is Urban Schools Network in Massachusetts, and so, that's an aggregation across those school districts, and then BPS. And so, these are average scaled scores, but you'll see that in most cases, BPS lags behind, on the grade level side, for example, lags behind the state by about 10 scaled score points, which is roughly equivalent to 20 percentage points in terms of meeting and exceeding expectations. But in terms of the distance between BPS and the urban school network, that difference is closer to, you know, anywhere between zero and three scaled score points. And so, I think that helps to kind of put, put that in perspective. You will see that on the right-hand side, there are some areas where Boston either performed exactly the same as other urban school districts in Massachusetts, or even performed a bit better. So, that just kind of gives you a sense of how we did in comparison to other urbans in the district, in the state. Here, I wanted to call out five schools that have students in grades three to eight that performed very, very well on this Next Generation MCAS test. And these five schools, you can see the Nathan Hale, the O'Donnell, the Taylor, the Trotter, and the Mason. They may not be our highest-performing schools in terms of absolute performance, but each one of these schools had over a 60 in terms of their SGP. And you'll remember that expected student growth percentiles is sort of between 40 and 60, but when schools exceed a 60, that's considered that their students are achieving really strong growth from one year to the next. And so, these schools are definitely worth celebrating. From here, I'm going to move us into our grade 10 results, which are going to feel a little bit more familiar, and I'll try to be concise. Here, we have grade 10 English Language Arts, and you'll see that the state's performance from last year to this year stayed pretty steady at 91% proficient advanced, but Boston Public Schools proportion who are proficient in advanced dropped by two percentage points. When you look at how that breaks out by racial subgroups, you'll see that the subgroup that saw the decline, sort of similar to the larger, to the district as a whole, but a little bit magnified, is actually the Latino or Hispanic group. But for the other groups, we, we saw, you know, African-American and black students actually had a decline as well. So, I'll kind of unpack that for you on the next few slides. Here, we've broken the data out by some of the other student subgroups, and you'll see that for our students with disabilities, they saw a little bit of a decline, but it's really the English learners and former English learners that saw the largest decline in English Language Arts. But for our low-income and economic, or, yeah, for our low-income, I'm sorry, economically disadvantaged students, they, they saw a little bit of a decline as well. And then here, you'll see that we've broken out the English language learners from the former English language learners, and you'll see that our former English language learners continued to perform pretty much on par with how they've been performing. It's the English language learners that we saw a larger decline this past year. So, we wanted to try to unpack that a little bit and really understand a little bit more about the English language learners who took the 10th grade MCAS last year. And we, we broke them out by their ELD levels, and we found that, looking year over year, for most of the ELD levels, you know, two, three, four, and five, starting in beginning up to bridging, that they, that the students did not perform as well this past year as they did in 2016. In the next slide, we actually just wanted to describe the population of In the next slide, we actually just wanted to describe the population of students in terms of their ELD levels. And you'll see that from 2016 to 2017, BPS had a higher proportion of students that were ELD I and II entering and beginning than in 2017, while as for the students in ELD III and IV, there was a decrease. And so that's really led us to some questions about the decline in ELA performance in grade 10. Is it possible that it's somewhat that there's a population difference from 2016 to 2017? Here, you'll also see that when we compare the students from 2016 to 2017 in terms of their years in Massachusetts schools, that we had an increase in the proportion of students who were just in their second year in Massachusetts schools. And then you'll also see here that in 2017, we saw an increase in the proportion of students whose country of origin was, let's see, El Salvador stood out, Puerto Rico, Colombia, and Guatemala. So as you can tell, we're sort of trying to pack, unpack the population itself and the extent to which it may have changed. I'm going to move on to math and just show that our results did improve a little bit in grade 10, moving up from a 67%, 66% proficient advanced to 67 in Boston. We saw an improvement for African-American and Black students, improving by three percentage points from the year past. And we also saw some improvements for students with disabilities as well as economically disadvantaged students. For our English language learners, though, we still saw a bit of a decline in mathematics. And for our former English learners, we saw quite an uptick in their performance from last year. So to bring together these two pieces of information for 10th grade, we also typically look at the first-time competency determination pass rate. This is the piece of information that I oftentimes think of as students being on track for graduation, because this is a graduation requirement. And so we see that the proportion of students who met that this year declined just a little bit from the year prior, and the primary area where we saw a decline was in English Language Arts, which is what we shared already. So just to wrap this up, and I know that there's more data in the appendix, so you may have questions about those things as well, but as Dr. Chang mentioned, we really wanted to impress upon you and the public that the MCAS scores that we just shared definitely identify areas where students need academic support, but they also can reflect non-academic barriers to learning. And so here, we've listed out the other types of data points, which I think Dr. Chang kind of alluded to some of them as he was thinking, as he's talking about revising the performance meter. These are data that we are tracking on a regular basis. All of our schools have these data year over year, and we are building out data systems to try to track these, you know, on an online platform in a more accessible way for our schools. But everything from attendance to absenteeism, discipline and suspensions, school safety measures, measures of engagement for students' parents, mobility rates, graduation and dropout rates, access for ELL scores, DIBELS and TRC scores, which are for our early grades in terms of literacy assessments. So those are just some of the examples of things that we are tracking on a regular basis, and we wanted to kind of make sure that that was clear. And I think that that is, that's going to sum up my presentation. I could summarize from the beginning, but I think that Dr. Chang did a pretty good job of contextualizing the fact that we have a new test this year, and so I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Liam. I will open up the questions, but I have to channel one of our members who is not here right now, who would be nearly climbing over the table.
I know. We're all thinking.
May I just turn to slide 18 for a second?
Yeah.
And we talk about the distribution of country of origin. As we all have learned the past couple of weeks, Puerto Rico is part of the United States.
Yes.
So if we could rename that, please, as maybe the Territories of the United States or something like that?
That sounds right to me. Thank you.
Thank you. It is, even though it is an island, out of by water.
Yep.
In the middle of the Atlantic, right. But so we're channeling Dr. Uriarte. But I also do want to compliment you for having such a breakout of data that we have never seen before, which has been a request. So at this point now, I will turn it over to members for their questions. Ms. Robinson?
I guess my biggest question is, what happens next? We get this, how does this, not necessarily what the numbers are saying, but what do we do with these numbers? I'm thinking about all the kids that we talked about in the third grade are now in the fourth grade. So what will the fourth-grade teachers know and understand about what happened for those kids so that something is happening different? Because for me, it's frustrating to see the numbers over the years, realizing each cohort is a different group of kids. So we're not looking at, so we had one great group of eight-year-olds one year and a different group, of course, the scores are going to go up and down. So that's really not telling us much about really the impact on the children we see on a day-to-day basis.
Yep.
So how do we begin to look at those kids in the third grade and then see that same group in the eighth grade? And did they make the right kind of progress, or if they didn't, by group or whatever? What does that tell us about what we need to be doing?
So I would invite up Donnie Tran if he wants to join me or any of the other assistants.
Actually, I would love to invite Donnie Tran and Mary Driscoll up, and then let me kick off.
Great.
The response by saying that we know ultimately the work is in schools, the change is in schools, and schools are units of change. So while we do this analysis as a school system, the data inquiry cycle that happens at school and how we help have schools work together to understand their data is what's really critical. So it'd be great if Donnie can kind of share some of the initial analysis that he has done as the Assistant Superintendent of Academics and Professional Learning, and then Mary can talk about it from kind of the work that has already initiated at a school-side level.
So I'll share briefly some of the disaggregated data that we've been able to do in the short period since the results were released, particularly looking at what happened to the scores when we made specific strategic investments, and, which I think is the right sort of granular analysis. It gets to some of the clearly benchmarking around some specific goals and thinking about what is our value add and the impact of the work that we do. Specifically, I'll reference the investment in new math curriculum from grades K to five and then also six to eight. What we noticed was that there was an unusual aberration in the SGP for students in fifth grade in mathematics. And when we looked at that data more closely, we saw that the schools that decided, because we are, you know, a district that values autonomy, schools that chose to adopt the curriculum that we offered last year actually had a six scaled point increase in grades five, which is actually equivalent to about a third of a standard deviation, which, from an effect size standpoint, is substantial. We still need to better understand exactly what's underneath that and to disaggregate that more. But it's those sorts of analyses that are helping us better understand the impact of our initial investments, and will also point the way towards specific subgroups that still need additional support to have equal access to all of those cognitively demanding tasks that sit inside of those curricular investments. And we're seeing some, also some strong results when we disaggregate it by people who are implementing the curriculum well, who are using the right instructional techniques in other grades as well, where we've also made some investments. So we're using this data to target supports to specific schools and doing some more work, because we know that it takes time to deeply implement a curriculum. It's a hard transition. We saw some strong successes last year, but we know that we still have more work to do. And then Mary can speak to the work that we're doing to help all schools better understand what their data means and to create action plans that directly address the largest and most substantial gaps.
So although we're only now in the public phase of this data, we began getting a glimpse into the data and the results back in July when the preliminary results that didn't give us information about things like student growth or individual student performance, but did give us information about sort of the aggregate performance relative to the standards. And so at that point, school leaders, you know, started digging into it and really like looking across grade by grade, where are the places where students seem to be doing relatively well with standards and what, where are the places where there are gaps? We also, over the summer, as we were thinking about the arc of learning for all of our school leaders and teacher leaders, realized the importance of making sure that every school have an instructional leadership team that's really prepared to use a data inquiry process to dig into data sets like this one, as well as many other data sets that they have available to them throughout the year. And so the instructional superintendent's team has been working closely with the ODA team and particularly the data inquiry facilitators and then members of the asset team to take the skills that the data inquiry facilitators have really perfected, and they've developed a really excellent process of training school-level teams in data inquiry, and then the amazing set of tools that the asset team created in the BPS Essentials for Equity in Instruction. And we created an arc of learning so that throughout this year, school leaders are coming together with their teacher leaders seven times. They are using data inquiry to look at things like MCAS data, to look at our beginning-of-year interim data, reading data, and to craft a very specific problem of practice relative to the performance trends that they're seeing in each school, and then to identify a practice, an essential practice that's related to the essentials. And we're trying that out in schools. So today and last week, school leaders and teacher leaders met in about eight schools each time across the district and actually went into classrooms and are norming around, what does it look like if you're giving asset-based feedback? So that they're able to get clear about that and then go back to their schools and roll that out through their instructional leadership teams into all of their classrooms. So the idea of using this MCAS data along with the essentials is, you know, sort of the lever for our professional learning for school leaders for the year.
And I will just add that now that we've gone through the standard-setting process or the process by which educators came and, you know, looked at the data and made some real choice about cut points, you know, we're going to be getting this data much sooner in terms of these kinds of official results as we did in prior years with MCAS.
Also this year, we, could you speak to our interim assessment platform and how the systems we've been able to build around that now?
Yes, absolutely. I'd be remiss not to let you guys know, if I haven't already, that over the past year and a half now, actually, Mary and Donnie were very involved in this, but also were a group of principals and teachers very involved in doing an exploration, an RFP, to invite folks to come forward and let us know what interim assessments that they provide and for us to really be able to gauge, given the quality that we're looking for here in BPS and also the flexibility we're looking for, given the fact that there is curricular autonomy, and so we do have schools that are on different scope and sequences, that we were able to procure a set of assessments that is actually, these interim assessments that are really for BPS, they're created with the asset team and members who have that instructional expertise, but they're actually created by the same content provider or test creator as the Next Generation MCAS test. And so that, we are housing on a really sophisticated platform called Illuminate, and so more and more of our schools are really getting engaged in using those. And so in terms of, you know, what data have they been able to look at, you know, they're taking those interim assessments right now, so even though these data that we're looking at are for the prior cohort of students, they actually have some really concrete data right now about the students that sit and sit with them.
I guess my question still is, though, in spite of all of that, Black boys still are not doing well and haven't been doing well in all of these years. So are we changing the curriculum? Or are we trying to find a curriculum that helps Black or Latino boys or the other subgroups do better? That may not be the same thing that everybody else needs. And I guess my question is, even with all the data, what are we doing that changes the outcomes for kids?
So Dr. Rose and his team have put together a series of early warning indicator systems, and he can speak more to that than I can, but we're using that data now at the TLT level and also encouraging it to use at the school level in order to more quickly identify students who do need extra support and then making sure that they're getting the differentiated support that they need in order to access the curriculum. And Dr. Neves is also working on, as a part of an asset project, asset-wide project, a toolkit of resources and interventions at both Tier Two and Tier Three that allow students to have, or that allow teachers to better serve the specific needs of each student, once those, once the assessments that Nicole was just talking about illuminate and show us exactly what those needs are. So this integrated system of strong formative assessments, early warning indicators, and the right resources and tools that address those needs, once those things, we're putting in place the system that can bring all of those things together in order to address the gaps that you're pretty full of.
I would just add, our teachers and our schools are also the vehicles in which our curriculum is passing through. So I always say, adding rigor without thinking about equity will cause bigger gaps, because those systems that work for the dominant culture in the schools will continue to improve when we're not improving our mindsets, our skill, and our will to reach our marginalized populations. So things like trackers and thinking about progress monitoring more accurately and matching interventions with students is, I think, a technique that is growing and we want to push. We're also on this long journey of changing mindsets. I don't think, I mean, one of the problems is, I think, when people look at this data they think is normal. And, you know, is it a skill? Is it a will? Do we have the mindsets in our schools to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to reach our marginalized populations? We started this work with principals, we're starting it centrally. That work is starting to bleed down into schools, quite often by policy, what we're telling schools that they need to start talking about, the conversations that have started this year. But until we get to those core issues, I fear we will never be able to make a huge dent in outcome achievement gaps based on MCAS or any other measure that we want. So I also want to talk about other measures other than MCAS, because I think when we put all our focus on MCAS, we often create schools that just focus on MCAS, and we want to focus on creating whole children. And standardized tests in and of itself have biases that are inside of them. But I would guarantee you that, you know, most of the other measures that we would measure would show similar gaps. So we're trying to create the will, the mindset, the skills of all of our practitioners to start really focusing, targeting our most marginalized populations. And so as that work grows, we hope to see gaps close.
And I would just add, some of the ways we're trying to have some accountability for that work is that in the Quality School Plan this year, every school is required to have a CLSP SMART goal. So, you know, to talk specifically about the learning that school leaders did last year with Colin and Hayden's team and to, you know, like set a goal for how they're going to move that work into their schools. And then also, when we ask schools to set student measures that they're going to use to measure whether this data inquiry work is having an effect, we're asking them not to look at absolute achievement, but to actually look for gap closing. So not enough, if everybody's going up, but everyone's going up at the same rate, then we're not actually closing gaps. So we're asking them to focus on the closing of gaps.
In many districts, I know, students have one-on-one computer or tablet use in order to have ongoing practice before they go to test-taking. What is that, what's happening for our students with regard to that? Are they becoming quite, you know, used to using these, or is it still a lab kind of
Mark Christine is here, so I don't know if he'll hear this question, but he may be able to speak to it as well. I mean, right now, we're in the midst of submitting to the state all the information in terms of which schools are going to test students in which grades in terms of, for computer-based tests. And I would say it's really arranged by school. And we don't have any schools now who shouldn't be able to have the capacity to test all of the students in the four grade levels, actually, that the state is requiring this year online. However, they will probably need to do some cycling of these, you know, Chromebook carts to different classrooms. We do have, you know, three schools this year for the first time that are getting We do have, you know, three schools this year, for the first time, that are getting the one, they're working with the Verizon Initiative to have one-to-one, these middle schools that I'm sure you know of. But, and I think, and there's definitely other schools that already have that, but I think there's a range. And, I mean, we do know that the digital divide is a very real thing, and I think for our younger students, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's very real.
Right, because my question is, does that create yet another impediment? Is it trying to both navigate the computer as well as do the math or the reading, and will that have an impact on their ultimate performance?
I mean, I don't think it should be showing up in these next-generation MCAS results, because I think that the state is, is doing everything statistically and psychometrically, actually going to a technical advisory committee meeting for two days with the state tomorrow, and will be learning, at a very technical level, what they did to control for testing mode. But I think it's a good question for our instructional team, you know, what do we really think are some of the challenges that students are having when, when technology is really something that they interact with, maybe just at school, or maybe just periodically at school?
Also, Ms. Robinson? Great, thanks. Ms. Oliver Davila.
I don't really have a question, it's more comments, which is very hard to, to hear that we are one of the best school districts, because when I look at this, and it's, this is, you can tell me it's a new test, and I can't compare, but still, when we look at ELL students, when we look at Latino students, we look at African-American students, and you have all of this critical data points. I mean, I think at the end of it all, we need to challenge ourselves. I realize that we have some measures that we have to meet, but I, but I think we need to look beyond just the standardized testing, and we need to really, it's not a one-size-fits-all, and I think we heard from Dr. Rose, I agree with everything he said, there has to be other ways that we can measure students' growth and performance. Because in real life, in college, in real life, this is not, you know, how students demonstrate their learning and their growth. And all of these things, at the end of the day, are tied back to student-centered learning. And so, how can we also really put into effect our strategic implementation plan? When we look at, like, dual enrollment, when we look at internships, when we look at expeditionary learning, all of the things that would make a student want to come to school, because they're not, because they're absent, they're coming late, whatever, it's because it's not engaging, they're not engaged, it's not exciting. And we need to just really, I think, take a whole different approach, and really just look at other ways that we can bring, you know, competency-based, I know Dorchester Academy was doing that, so it's more of, like, I just feel the urgency that we really need to move forward in these other areas that come back to just doing things differently than what we're doing, because we're just continuing to let our students down. And our students are smart. It's not that they're not smart, it's not that they can't do it, there's a lot of other issues, biases, et cetera. So, that's my comment. My other thing that I wanted to ask, you know, Dr. Chen stepped out, but for the performance meter, I wanted to see if we could actually look at ELD progress and reclassification, because I think that's really critical to look at, so, if someone took notes on that.
So, for those of you who know, yeah, we can definitely take notes on that, and the, for those of you who know where the state is going in terms of their new accountability system, progress on, in terms of ELD levels is definitely going to be something that will be a part of that new accountability system. I've, you know, been working in school districts with large ELL populations for long enough to know that while reclassification is our goal, and I should really let Dr. Estrada and Priya from OELL speak to this, it's kind of a losing battle in terms of using it as a metric, because every time that you have students reclassify, they then move out of your denominator. And so, the more students that you're able to reclassify the next year, you just have sort of a pool of students who, who have not yet reclassified, if that makes sense. So, you, you need to have some sort of way of looking at students in a cohort, you know, proportion of students who reclassify within five or six years, and they stay within that cohort, whether they reclassified within one year, two years, or three years. So, not to get into the weeds in terms of how it's calculated, but...
Thank you, Alex, for bringing up that question, though. So, I think one of the things that we found in Boston Public Schools, it's a wonderful trend, and if Dr. Uriarte was here, she would definitely confirm this, is that our students in Boston, our English-language learners, when they reclassify, they end up outperforming their English-only students. And when you look at national research and data on our English learners, who many of them in this district are Latino, what you find is that their actual trajectory of high school graduation and going on to college, the sooner they could reclassify, there's an increase in that graduation rate, as well as their attendance at college.
Dr. Estrada, will you repeat that again, please?
Yes, so, the, what we see nationally as a trend is that our English learners, if they reclassify within a reasonable amount of time, and are able to reclassify within that reasonable time, what they see over time is that they graduate on time, there's a higher likely of them graduating, and attending college. So, I think it's an important thing for us to keep track of. I don't think, I think we're working right now on creating those systems of tracking our students' C to Dr. Rose's point, of those early warning indicators. If a student's not reclassifying, typically, we say, every year, they should be making progress on their English language development. And if they're not, figure out why, and be able to drill into that data and be more explicit around what particular area of proficiency the students are struggling with, whether it's listening, speaking, reading, or writing, that's very meaningful data that should then drive instruction. So, I think as a system, for us to move in that direction would be really powerful. I think the other piece of that is to also make sure that BPS does not have a large percentage of their English learners being long-term English learners, which in our last analysis, we did see about 6,000 of our English learners, of our 15,000 students, that we do have a good percentage of them that are long-term English learners, which means after five years, which they should have reclassified, they are not. So, being in our system, being in an English language development program, within five years, they should have reclassified, and they have not. So, anything past that is considered a long-term English learner. So, I think we have some really important places that we should be focused on, and so, my aim is to have that in the performance meter, and something that we should be tracking as part of our English early warning indicators work.
And thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila, for pointing that out, because of course, if Dr. Uriarte was here...
I'm just handling it.
I know, she would have pointed out as well. And, and by the way, you know, Dr. Estrada, thank you for pointing out both the success of our former English-language learners in Boston Public Schools, both here and nationally, a perfect example of which we saw during public comment, when we had a graduate of the Boston Public Schools who said she did not speak much English initially, and through the hard work of some wonderful teachers, graduated obviously very proficient, and went on and became a Posse scholar and graduated from Bryn Mawr, she's still with us this evening, so thank you. But you're a perfect example of exactly what we're talking right now, so thank you for highlighting that for us. And thank you also to the teachers that helped you get there. Let's not forget that that's a day-by-day issue. So, it's always nice when we get to look at data and talk about theory, and then have real-life examples as well. So, thank you for being here. Ms. Dean Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, it was very meaty, and so, there is so much meat that really requires a lot of digestion. The point that I just want to maybe just ask regarding the early warning indicators, have you yet worked through what differentiation looks like? Have you started to kind of go down that road to say, okay, we're recognizing some trends, for example, with our black boys? And the results of the early warning indicators are informing us to move in these three specific directions? Have you been able to kind of narrow the focus?
Now, I'll reiterate Dr. Rose's point that, you know, when I think, when it comes to that specific example of black boys, there's so many layers of that work. And I think that much of the work that his department is doing in terms of engaging with those mindsets and systemic barriers, and also providing specific programming that supports the achievement of black boys in particular, is all critical with regards to addressing the gap. When I think about the utilization, though, of Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, it's, it's so granular down to the level of skill, and that that's the power of using really, really robust formative assessments to help determine where a student is struggling, and then addressing that more, in a more targeted fashion, with the right tools and the right resources. And so, I think that there's, it's a both-and, engaging with the, that sort of, that work around culture and linguistically sustaining practices, but also building teacher skill around identifying the specific seal gaps and addressing those within the context of the classroom.
So, there's still a great work in progress, because I guess my concern is, you know, this time next year, right, when we receive a report, and we see the data, what strides do you want to have seen within a year's time? That is reasonable, maybe not overly ambitious, so that we can move the needle? Is it, is it reasonable to assume that we can move the needle? Or are we still going to, is this a slow-moving train that we're still trying to figure out? How, how do we really identify some of the critical risk factors, and then identify the different tiers?
There's a, there's a really great article about how school systems have to be dual-screen or dual-operating system organizations, where you are pursuing a long-term strategy, because to dismantle the things that Dr. Rose and all of us have talked about extensively, you have to have, you have to play the long game. At the same time, you have to just move forward with the fierce urgency of now, and engage with the gaps and the skills and the strengths of the students that are in front of you in the very, very short term. So, I would say that we, we have to do that, we have to do both, we don't have a choice. Moral imperative is doing both of those things. I would say, I want to highlight, actually, return to the superintendent's comments from the beginning of this evening, where he talked about the $13 million investment that the mayor's office is making. That is specifically targeted towards small-group differentiated instruction. So, that's a significant investment in the sort of classroom infrastructure that allows that to happen. And my department, and asset more broadly, is working on professional learning for every single school that receives that investment, to make sure that they can utilize the, that furniture and those resources to do that differentiated small-group instruction. So, we would expect to see gains from, from that investment. I mean, I think we would be not responsible if we did not hold ourselves to a high bar relative to that. And, and our departments collectively are making sure that schools have not just the physical plant resources, but also the instructional resources that help, that help them serve their students.
I think another place we've made a big investment is in our Excellence for All, and that's, in some ways, it's kind of our laboratory for what are the inputs that will allow us to accelerate the kind of progress that you're, you're talking about, that we need to make. And so, one of the, you know, places we're really digging into this MCAS data is within those classrooms that are part of that initiative to, you know, understand of the various inputs that we identified in the first year, inputs around rigorous curriculum, around enrichments, around executive functioning, around social-emotional learning, around personalized learning, looking at, you know, in the various schools, which, which teachers participated in which professional development, and what do we see in the data that's telling us that it's having the desired effect? And then, from there, we'll look to, you know, make further investments in the most promising of those, those practices.
I'm going to add that there's an opportunity for us, now that we have these interim data systems in place, to be able to monitor this on a more regular basis, to understand where some of these gaps may be. And I know Dr. Rose and Dr. Chen are working very closely to look at, to look at the data in a more innovative way, and to see the overlap between the curriculum, what young people are actually learning, and comparing that to what, what the gaps are saying. So, I know that there's been some initial analysis around our curriculum, and schools that adopted a particular curriculum, and the gaps within particular subgroup. So, I actually really appreciate some of the innovative thinking that's going on. We've been talking about the curriculum needs to be reflective of our young people's experience, and we have a gut instinct that when we start closing that gap between what the student's experience is with what they are learning in school, that we will actually also see closing of gaps as well. And Dr. Rose, if you want to add any thoughts around that? It's actually some, I'm learning a lot from him constantly.
I mean, a lot of the, a lot of these things are spelled out in our implementation plan for the OEG policy. We have specific goals around decolonizing the curriculum, we've been working with Donnie's team around thinking about innovative ways to bring teachers together to build curriculum that connect to lived experiences of the students that are in front of them, right? And so, the more that we can create responsive schools that really know who the student is in front of them, and can respond to the needs culturally, educationally, and then we have the systems to progress monitor how they're, how they're building their skills, or whether they need an intervention, and we can match the right intervention with them, the closer we are to becoming a responsive school that can close gaps and accelerate learning. And right now, we're building those processes out. That's kind of the long game that, that Donnie talks about, but there, that doesn't mean there aren't things that we can do in an interim to make sure that we're accelerating and improving.
Okay.
Yes, so, this is, it's really going to be critical to see the gains that we make this next year. And there's a part of me that's wondering if we're looking at a particular demographic, so, you know, let's say we're looking at black boys, and if I look at the way the IEP system is set up, where there's a team of people that includes the parent, and they're already identifying the challenges that the student brings, partly because there's other data and other resources, either pediatric, you know, medical records, things of that nature, to inform, and then this team gets together, and they identify the goals, and they identify the strides that need to be made. Is this kind of the same direction that you're wanting to take with, you know, that demographic, for example? Because I'm already wondering, if you already have an African-American student who has an IEP, would you already have low-hanging fruit to say, all right, how can we use this system to achieve these gains, you know, with, with his, with his or her academic progress? I'm just trying to see if both systems can work together, so that we're not trying to reinvent something that's already set up to set a student up for success.
Yeah, I think the IEP system's a little bit different in the way that students are identified, the specific nature of the, of the interventions, but that intentionality around having a team of people looking at a student. We have schools, I mean, the English High School, if you go watch their early warning indicator system meetings, you sit, you're sitting around in an auditorium or in the library after school with your team of teachers who are, and you have a target list of students who are slipping, and you're creating interventions real-time, right, right on time. This is all out of the research of Bob Valfence at, at John Scopian's University. You know, if we can get that type of thinking, that we're, that, that we need to stop looking at the aggregate and playing to the middle, but really paying attention to those who are sliding, starting to slide, or behind, and doing the intervention right on time, not waiting for them to fail at the end of the year and fall through the cracks, the more activated we can get professionals to be doing that, at all levels of our system, I think we're going to be able to catch more students and put them back on track, along with all the other work that needs to go along with that. When we talk about IEPs and special education, we also need to be careful, I think one of the key indicators that we want schools, TLTs, to be looking at is over-identification, and making sure that we're not pushing black boys into settings that are less educational, right? And so, you know, yes, we need sub-separate settings, but, you know, if, where we see disproportionality, we need to start stepping in and thinking about other ways we can intervene before we get to that point where we're identifying a student for special that might not need it.
And I guess the piece about the IEP that I wanted to target was the parental engagement, having the parent voice as a critical piece. So, you know, as we're looking at these early warning indicators for students without an IEP, is there a component where the parent can sit with the professionals as well, so that they are a part of the team that's increasing their success? Something to just think about, that's, that's why I was seeing the correlation.
I think that would be ideal, right?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Ms. Dean Robinson, thank you. Mr. LaCanto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I only have one question, but it involves a little bit of context. And so, you know, I'm thinking back to last month, when the district came before us and gave us a great report on, I believe it was about two dozen or so schools... gave us a great report on, I believe it was about two dozen or so schools that are level four or low-level three. And these are the schools that have been, you know, we're wrapping our services around. They're the schools that we're going out and making the extra special effort to try to turn them around before they get to the point of failure, state takeover, so on and so forth. So, you know, with that in mind, traditionally around this time when we get our MCAS scores, we learn about, you know, what action the state might be taking to move a school from tier to tier, or take over a school, or institute turnaround matters. And we don't have that this year. The state's held K-8s harmless, and it's elected not to take any further action at nine to 12. So...
Really quickly, the state has not given a level. It's not held harmless. The language is very precise. They've just not given a level accountability for K-8s because it's a reset year.
Okay. Thank you for the correction. So with all that in mind, and I realize that this data is all very new. We got it a little bit later than we traditionally receive it from the state relative to when it comes public before us. But is there anything that we've learned out of this data that causes us to change any of our assumptions about the schools that are on that list? And are there other schools that we might want to add or subtract from that list as a result of what we now know? Or is it too early to tell?
Yeah, that, it's very early to tell. What we do know, the schools that we had some concern about that were the lowest-level-three schools, actually did show some strong results in terms of SGP. And so the efforts put into by those schools last year with the partnership of central office did demonstrate some effectiveness. And so we did have those very deliberate conversations with the state about each one of those schools that we were concerned about. And for every single one of the K-8s, there were some pretty strong results in terms of SGP. But in terms of just overall proficiencies, apples and oranges, it's just too difficult to measure. And that's why the state's not even going to go there at this point.
And again, you know, I appreciate that it is apples and oranges. You know, it's a different test to a large extent. You know, maybe not so much with our nine to 12s, of course. But I also appreciate that you put out there the statement that there's, you know, and we all know this, but it's always good to be reminded of this, that MCAS isn't the only measure that makes a school. But bearing that in mind, are there other? This is traditionally a time where, you know, we're conditioned to react to, okay, you know, we now know something is wrong. And I don't mean to be doomsday by this question, but I want us to be aware of, you know, whether there might be other measures or, I suppose, checkpoints along the academic year where, you know, there might be other warning signs that might arise. And again, you know, I'm posing that question from the standpoint of, we hate to have surprises in the district. And we know that you are proactively taking steps around those very neediest of our schools. But with that in mind, I don't need names. I just want a bigger picture of when it, what we might be looking forward to. And is there a possibility for, you know, some sort of surprise at some point in the future?
So we are in constant communication with the state, especially in particular with our high schools. We've invited the state to join our instructional focus reviews, our data inquiry cycles, especially all the schools that we have some concerns about. And because we're in constant communication, I am not expecting any surprises, at least this year. Any sort of state accountability actions that may be taken, we will be, we should, we will have ample notice on those. And our school leaders and our school communities will be made aware prior to any sort of actions from the state. But because we've been working so collaboratively with the state and been inviting them to, and being very transparent with them, they have also really appreciated. They've stated that they've appreciated just being part of the process. But we have a lot of work to do.
Of course. That's very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Dean Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have more understanding questions. I think Nicole may want to step back up so I can get there. Just so I understand what I'm reading and don't want to get ahead of myself. So on slide four, we have the grades three through eight test. And as you pointed out, they're able to, because now the structure of the test is such that essentially the same group should persist over time. And so what that seems to say is that relative terms, we have about the 30% of our kids are performing at expectations. Now, if we're a school where we know the large percentage of our kids are coming in from trauma-informed backgrounds, and so we're getting kids early, wouldn't we want to see improvement over that time? I mean, so if we're not seeing improvement, it looks like we're not pushing our kids forward. Am I misinterpreting what this data is telling us?
Well, let me just make sure I'm understanding your question. Are you talking about improvement between this past spring results and the spring results that we'll get after?
I understand we can't compare old tests to new tests. But we have a test this year that all these kids pretty much took. And so we're looking, comparing their performance in the same test. And what slide four, I think you're saying is that cohort by cohort, they're performing about the same. If we have a schools district that's trying to close gaps and improve performance, even if it's the same test across years, if we're doing what we want to be doing, shouldn't we have seen an improvement? And if that's true, that construction is true, and we're not, what does that tell us?
I think that's a very interesting question. And I cannot, I'm not going to pretend that I have the right answer. I think that the way that the standard-setting process, as well as the way that the test was designed in this year, there was a tension taken to sort of smoothing out any considerable differences in terms of the meeting expectations cut points. But as the state has said, we, in the future, may see some differences. And so what I think you're asking is more about, like, from grade three to four to five to six to seven to eight, shouldn't we see this bar chart kind of starting to trend up? Interestingly, we, I didn't bring this data today, but we did explore...
Because the argument is that if we're going to close the gap, we have to get more than the year's improvement in each and every kid, and therefore they should be performing better.
With the assumption that they are the same kids every single year, you know, high-transient C population, it's a little bit more difficult. But I understand what you're trying to say.
I think we'll need to think more about that. We should probably, I'm going to this technical advisory committee for the next two days, and I'm going to ask them a little bit about what we should really expect to see. But I will say that there were, we did some comparisons just between boys and girls. And I didn't bring forth all that data today, but I think you received it maybe in a memo. And it was very interesting to see that, for example, our girls in BPS, we do actually see some upward movement, meaning that the meeting expectation rates increases from grade three to four to five to six to seven to eight. That was just one example of a population where we saw that. And for some of our populations, we actually see the opposite trend. And that's something that we obviously do not want to see.
Okay. I guess, so the clarification is, is our population so transient that we can only think about performance in a year-to-year basis? So therefore, in some ways, your comparisons don't help us anyhow because we're not testing the same kids? Or are we not making them gains? So that's question number one. So on slide number...
Just very quickly, that data that you're referring to, you saw that increase from females, right? In English language arts, it's going to increase over. I would, I think one of the good questions to ask in this upcoming meeting you have, does the standards have any impact on it? Because a lot of the English language arts standards do build on top of each other. And many of the standards are tested, that are tested year in and year out, as opposed to mass standards that tend to be a little bit stackable. So it'd be interesting to understand that.
No, that's great. So understanding that it's a new test, but we're getting data with everyone in the state taking the same new test. So in slide number five, we begin to look at how we compare to our peers across the state, right? And so it's a one, it's a point in time, and I respectfully disagree with my colleague on the data. But I think these tests are important because they are the things we can think about at the system level. And I think there are other data that we want to have, but I do, so I do want, I don't want to throw them out quite yet into something else. But so on five, it looks like relative to the state, with former ELL learners, we're outstanding. We do a great job. With a lot of others relative to the state, we're actually weak. And we talk about, and this is where, particularly when you add, when you go further, and we start looking on slide eight, with the networks, we're actually, we talk about being in the highest-performing urban district in the country, and we're underperforming our state peers, pretty much across the board. As I read it, this is the first time I looked at it, and unfortunately, we combined the ELL and the FELL because we would have had a bright spot if we hadn't done that, as I'm reading the data. But is that an inaccurate read? It's the first time I've seen it. I just looked at it today. So I don't want to jump too far ahead. I know you've looked at this better.
No, that, what you're saying is accurate relative to other urbans in Massachusetts, but I'm sure that you all know better than I that Boston is a real outlier in terms of urban districts in the state of Massachusetts, in terms of its size. And I think in some ways, the population, even though I don't necessarily have that data on hand, so when we talk about being, and I know you know this, but when we talk about being one of the highest-performing urban school districts in the nation as measured by the school, the nation's report card, NATE, it's really in comparison to a national sample of urban districts, many of which have, you know, populations that may be very similar to Boston's, or may be different in other ways.
So now there's some of our Commonwealth peers are just smaller states and environments, and the things you can do in a single-strand city is different. But again, on these tests, as we go through the data, I just don't want to walk away from the fact that, you know, we were closing the gap over a period of time, and now we recent asymptote on the tests as they go forward. And I just want to make sure I'm not misinterpreting the data that way. In fact, we kind of dropped a little bit this year.
You're talking about grade 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did see a little bit of a drop in grade 10. I don't feel like we quite have enough information to show any drops in the grades three to eight, but I think that the interpretations that you're citing are accurate.
So if we're at this kind of either asymptote, or we're not moving as far as we, this is a little anxiety-pur化. I'm surprised the room's not more full. When I read this data, I was surprised that we didn't have a bigger crowd here concerned about this. I don't want to walk away, and hearing all the molecular work that people are doing, which I deeply respect, and I think, I understand is very much on the right track, I don't want to walk away this data saying we're still very at risk, is what I'm reading. And so the urgency that Donnie talked about earlier, I don't want to, I think we really need to think about and hear more accurately what we're going to do. So going back to Mr. LaCanto's question about comparisons, I know we don't have the state data, but are there peer schools out and about in the state who were performing roughly the same as some of our level-three schools in the previous data set? Can we get this current data set to see where we are, to really get a sense of whether we're holding on with fingernails, we're making some improvement, or that there's some risk points, independent of levels? You know, because I don't think, at the end of the day, I don't think this is a board that's overly anxious about, "Gotcha" with levels or tiers or whatever. But really, how we use those comparisons to know how well we're doing so that we can make advocacy for more resources to do better or target them. I hope I'm making sense with that.
I think that's a really interesting idea in terms of analysis. I think we typically sort of look at our student growth percentiles and kind of take it as that's a pretty strong understanding of student growth. But I really appreciate the idea of sort of trying to control for the prior performance of schools, whether that be here in Boston or outside of Boston, in terms of how they performed on Park, and then looking at how they performed on Next Generation MCAS. That's, I think that would be really...
That would be our peer group, and relative to them, in terms of the numbers we now have. This is very difficult work. I know you've been grinding with this data, and it's a very difficult data set to get our hands about. So I thank you for the time and energy you put in, and clarify what you share, a very difficult set of data. So thank you.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Superintendent?
Just really quickly, Dean Coleman, I think we could probably even look at our schools that are demonstrating strong student growth as the beginning, analyzing what happened last year as a starting point to understand how we're going to close gaps. Those five schools that have been identified are, should be our starting point, because these are our students in the city of Boston that there's...
Now you're going to, the next question I think that we really have to grapple with is, we have a lot of great success, and we do some great things. And you have schools here, and we were at the School in the Move presentation the other day, and we have great examples. Replication and scale is not our strength yet. And, you know, how long will the charter be there as they turn over their administration? These are concerns we have. So yes, this would be great to see what they've done, but how do we grow it, I think is the other piece.
Thank you.
Dean Coleman, relative to a question that you brought up, and Ms. Lamb, you said that, excuse me, that Boston does well on the nation's report card, NATE, relative to other urban districts. I will also pause it. I'm aware of a study that's currently underway, excuse me, that should be out in the next couple of months. And it will most likely show that Boston not only does very well relative to our urban peers across the country, but in fact is very well against national averages, including city, rural, and suburban districts. And when it looks at how charters do, how private schools do as well, we have a tremendous amount. And this is across the board, math, English, and at various grade levels. So when that comes out, when it's finalized and reviewed, peer-reviewed, et cetera, the preliminary data will be very positive for Boston, and we can look for signs. The other question I have, Ms. Lamb, and Dean Coleman rightly pointed out that we did decline slightly this past year overall in grade 10 MCAS. It's a very slight decline overall, though I appreciate you unpacking it, that we get a chance to look at subgroups. But on the overall decline, is that a statistically significant decline?
The state, when they kind of run through the results with us each year, they do warn that, you know, when we're talking about one or two percentage points, and they were specifically referring to the legacy MCAS for grade 10, that we should be careful about, you know, not making too much of those kinds of differences. I think it's when we look at specific subgroups and we see that those differences are sort of very persistent and specific to certain subgroups, that was really why we wanted to drill deeper into that.
So English was what, a 2% decline? And math was a 1% increase?
Yes.
Okay. So neither of those you would consider statistically significant?
I think, yeah, I think that we should be careful about making too much of that.
But looking at the subgroups were some important lessons, was that we're taking action on.
Yeah, I think that we do need to pay attention to that data.
So it's a point of caution for us, something to raise awareness, but not quite go crazy on. But particularly when we look at subgroups, seeing what we're doing about that is critical. So thank you very much for the presentation this evening. This one actually moves directly into our final report, an update on the strategic implementation plan for schools in the 16, 17. Dr. Donna Muncy is home ill this evening. Superintendent would like to be.
I got it.
We got a few colds going on around town, so, including myself. But I believe Superintendent Chang is going to handle this presentation.
I will. So I'm going to go ahead and do the presentation from up here, and if someone could, I think, Tommy Walsh is going to handle. So we're going to need the new presentation put up. As that is being, as the presentation is being put up, let me just start off by saying that today, we're going to be providing you, I will be providing you, an update on our strategic implementation plan. strategic implementation plan, and the progression of major initiatives contained within the plan, all of which are working, obviously, to close opportunity and achievement gaps, and are all designed to channel the school committee's strategic vision. And next slide. Tonight, we will provide two things. Number one, a review of our, of the progression of our major strategic initiatives, and second, a report on the outcomes of our strategic implementation plan and some reflections. I want to start off by just doing a bit of reflection with all of you, and just sharing with you some things that we've been grappling with as a leadership team within the school district, as it pertains to our strategic work in the system. What you see up there is just kind of a quick journey to how we've gone to this point. And this school committee in February 2015 did approve a strategic plan for the school system. It was my job as a new superintendent back in 2015 to take that strategic plan and, you know, put some meat on it, to create a strategic implementation plan. That started with a hundred-day plan, followed by some deep work in identifying what are, what were the strategic initiatives in the system, and then really funneling that work from 58 strategic initiatives down to 29 strategic initiatives focused around five focus areas. So last year, we introduced a strategic implementation plan. It was organized in five focus areas. There were, again, 29 different strategic initiatives. And at the end of last year, the entire district leadership team came together, and we analyzed how we did. Like, we set all these milestones within these 29 initiatives. How did we actually do? I'm going to share some of that data with you. But before I share that data with you, we learned some things about how we do the work in the system, and I want to be very transparent about. Number one, while we hope to be more focused, and we went from 58 to 29, 29 was still too many. And what happened was, when you have so many strategic initiatives going on in the system, while we intend to work cross-functionally, we end up just kind of reinforcing working in silos. Because you have 29 different initiatives, everybody kind of does their own thing. And the strategic implementation plan, when we really did the analysis, really became a work plan for different departments, rather than a set of kind of complex strategic initiatives that were mission-critical and required everybody to work together. And when we realized that, we, the executive cabinet spent three days during the summer on a retreat, saying, "We've got to figure out how to rethink this, because if we're going to continue doing these 29 things, we're not going to do any of these things really well, and they really will, or it's just going to be the work of different departments." And we've got to, so we've got to figure out, out these 29, are we going to surface six that are most important? Are we going to figure out what are six that are most cross-functional? We've got to figure out what really is our strategic work within the system. And that kind of took us to this next iteration of our theory of action. I want to share that with you. All of you should have this really fancy origami-style document. It's a two-pager. It's in your folders. I'm going to ask you to kind of take it out if you can. And on one side, you will see, have a definition of college career and life readiness, which is on the screen for everybody to see up there. And on the backside is how our North Star connects to our strategic priorities. I'm going to start off with the college career and life readiness. The college and career and life readiness definition is what we are going to call our North Star. It is what we hope and what we want aimed for our kids, that they graduate from Boston Public School, college career and ready, college career and life ready. And that means our students should be reading by, on grade level by third grade, and they should be participating in rigorous and enriching programming, and they should be getting 21st century learning skills needed in high school. And that's why the Boston Opportunity Unit, and I really want to thank the leadership of Krista McSwain. She led a citywide conversation over the last six months to define what college career and life readiness should be. And she worked across sectors, parochial schools, charter schools, traditional public schools. She worked with community-based organizations, higher education, businesses, and brought this, and I know Ron Dorsey, chief of education for a city, was really involved in this, brought everybody to the table, and BPS was one of many participants, and through a very collaborative process, came to this conclusion that the competencies that we want to see within our young people really should be about how they are kind of navigating themselves through life. What are the key competencies they need to navigate through life? So what you will see is, students should be able to set a vision, they should be able to work with others, they should be able to choose a course and change course when necessary. They need to understand how to build competencies. And as a Boston Public, as BPS, we have agreed across, along with all our other sector partners, that this is a definition that we're going to use as a North Star for BPS students. And this is kind of really, really powerful work, because if we look at the language in here, it isn't about just like young people's discrete skills, only about what young people know, but really about how they, what are things that they're able to do. And this really is about adult life. If you look at what we're expecting young people to do, this is about adult life. So that kind of gets us to the next slide, which is our BPS theory of action. On the left-hand side, you will see our North Star. On the right-hand side, we've talked, we constantly talk about and debate about this in, on this school committee, our schools are the unit of change. This is where the work is being done. And how do we, as a school system, really help support the closing opportunity and achievement gaps at schools? And how do we drive our work with the values of equity, coherence, innovation? We do this work, I fundamentally believe, we do this work by modeling the district as a classroom, where learning is occurring at all levels, where we're transforming learning for both young people and for adults, where we're building a sustainable system for Boston Public Schools. And as you push on me, as a leader in the school central office, to be more data, to really, really, to analyze the data, to be more about data inquiry, we should be expecting that at schools as well, and even within, like, you know, IEP meaning, they should be data, they should be, they should be wise in the way they use data. So at all levels of the system, we should be about learning. At the same time, we need to build, fundamentally rebuild the school system to be one that is more sustainable, one that really hits head-on some of the structure, structures are truly inequable. And I know Dr. Rose talked about that today. And that is why we have come to the conclusion that it is critical for us to take these 29 initiatives in the strategic implementation plan, and surface up six major priorities for the next three years. And I want to share what those three, six priorities will be. And these six priorities will be the priorities that will only be able, that we will only accomplish if we work cross-functionally. And so there are guiding coalitions, cross-functional teams that are being built around each one of these priorities, and each of these guiding coalitions has an executive cabinet sponsor. It's being led by an assistant superintendent, an executive cabinet member or department head, and these guiding coalitions have already begun their work to define what their actual goals and deliverable and timelines will be. Just like last year, when we created all those milestones for each one of the 29 initiatives, we're going to do the same thing for each one of these six priorities. And let me share what these six priorities are. Number one, instructional coherence. If our young people are moving from school to school, and families are moving from school to school, we need to bring some level of coherence to our instructional practices. And that's why the essentials for instructional equity work is so important. They kind of provide the guidance for how we close opportunity and achievement gaps, what are competencies we expect to see in classrooms. And we need this level of coherence. This is what coherence means instructional. We need a set of practices that we all fundamentally believe in that will close opportunity and achievement gaps. And we need to go through the data inquiry cycles to determine where are gaps, and how we're going to build the capacity of our educators, and our parents, and our young people, to address those gaps. The second thing, we need to prioritize adult learning. The world is changing so quickly. There's so much that needs to happen. We have to actually fundamentally rethink the way we learn as adults and as teacher leaders. So this is the work that's really being led by a team of people, including instructional superintendents and teacher leaders, really kind of redefining adult learning within BPS. And this adult learning has to happen as a pit crew, rather than discrete subject areas doing their work together, doing their work separately. This is a perfect example. When we, as a policymaking body, come together, and we think about all the needs for our students, we will say, "We know our young people need art. They need PE. They need to know how to code. They need music education. They need to know English, and they need to know math, and they need to know history, and they need to have civics." There's not the time in the day for all our young people to learn all that. But if we can do this work coherently, and really rethink how we come together as adults and give our young children the holistic education that you need, then we might be able to have a chance. So the second priority is around prioritizing adult learning in service of young people's learning. The third one is district reconfiguration. We've been talking about that quite a bit. We need more predictability for our families. We need to minimize transitions for students. We will be coming back to this school committee with some recommendations on how we continue to, how we take the next step to create more coherency with grade configurations. And we mentioned earlier this evening, this Saturday, there will be, here in the bowling building at 9:00 AM, a kind of big seminar around our middle school grades, and what grade configuration is best, when we bring national experts to come and speak to us, and it's being kind of co-sponsored by the Rappaport Institute, and we're going to bring that back to the school committee. The fourth priority is allocating funds more equitably. We have, we should be proud to have a weighted student formula in Boston Public Schools that differentiates both for grade level, for EL level, for special education, but we know that it needs to be even more nuanced. We know that community and neighborhood factors do play a part in the opportunity and achievement gap, and if there are opportunities for us to further be, even be more nuanced in how we distribute resources, we want to do so. So later on this year, we will be bringing to the school committee, for the, this school committee, to consider an opportunity index as its policy for how we allocate funds in Boston Public Schools. The fifth priority is really redesigning central office to be primarily focused around supporting our lowest-performing schools. Our central office continues, and we should, to bear kind of the responsibility of making cuts year in and year out. And we've got to make some decisions on, what are, what are we just going to stop doing? And we believe that we've got to get really fine-tuned in terms of, what are the schools we're going to put our primary emphasis on? And so we're in the midst of redesigning our central office to be focused on our lowest-performing schools. And we'll be coming back again to the school committee on, kind of, share with the school committee some of our initial designs. And the last one, we need to unify and improve upon our approach to serving schools and families, improve our customer service, include, improve the way we partner with parents and students and community. And so this is our sixth priority. As you can tell, all six of these priorities are going to require cross-functional expertise. It is, it's starting with these initial guiding coalitions. We will be coming back to this school committee with regular updates on each one of these priorities. But with this, now we have a lot more focus, and I will be able to come back to you with a lot more clear goals about what we're doing as a system, and it'll be a lot easier to create the smart goals around this. It'll be a lot, and once we get our performance meter down as well, we'll have kind of the key data, key performance indicators that we will use to measure our progress on all this. But I wanted to make sure I shared all that with you before I share with you how we did last year with 29 strategic initiatives. And so I think this is honestly the most, more important part of this evening's presentation, but at the same time, I do want to share how we did last year. And we can go to the next slide very quickly. The next slide shows how we, how we did in terms of all our milestones. So again, for all 29 initiatives, we created milestones for each one of them. Some had two, three milestones, others had like 10, 11 milestones. And what you can see is, we did complete the majority of it, of the milestones, although over a quarter of the milestones are on track. And there were some things that we just had to put on hold because we just didn't have the resources, and we felt that we were kind of falling behind in some of others. We actually broke down these milestones also in terms of focus areas, and what you will see is that in certain focus areas, I thought, I mean, we did do better. So the ones around creating a more coherent instructional program, which was focus area one, we did a much better job on. But in other focus areas, we struggled a bit more. And I do not believe we have the key to these focus areas, but I apologize. I need, I should have the, I have it right in front of me, if I can, I will share this with you right now. I'm sorry. So the first focus areas was around providing quality curriculum and instructional guidance to our schools, which is, it was about implementing inclusive, rigorous, and culturally and linguistically sustaining pre-K to 12 instructional program. And you'll see, I think that was the one we actually had the highest percentage of completion. The second one was, second one was around attracting, developing, and retaining a highly effective instructional team that is responsible, responsive to the diverse racial, cultural, and linguistic needs of Boston youth. What you will see is that area, we, that is the area we did, we're at least effective in. The third focus area was around engaging students, community organizations, grassroots, and faith-based leadership. Actually, we hit many of our milestones, the vast majority of our milestones in that one, a majority of our milestones in that one. The fourth one is about, was about developing a central support culture focused on customer service. We hit less than 50% of those milestones. And focus area number five was around creating a sustainable financial system that invests resources more equitably and strategically, and we, like, we completed 50% of those milestones. You will see in the following slide, kind of, we kind of break down that on the table. And again, I think at the end of all this work, we just realized that this better fit, fits into a work plan. The work that we did in partnership, led by a Collins team, to The work that we did in partnership, led by a Collins team to create a strategic, to have a implementation plan for our opportunity achievement gap policy, that is now integrated into the work. But now that is all part of our district work plan, and we are rising to the very top of those six big initiatives, as you see on this document. So with that, I'll turn to the school committee for any questions that they may have.
Thank you, Superintendent. Open up the, Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the big graph. I wonder if we could just reword some of this. When I look at the improved customer experience, I think you said it, but it's not written on here. I think it's not just the approach, it's also like the partnership with families. I think you need to say partnership in here. I mean, I think I see this as the community as a classroom, not just the district. And somehow, within this, you know, there's a role that is played by partners that include business, include organizations, nonprofits, community-based, faith-based, and I don't feel like that is in here, because BPS cannot do it alone. And so somehow, that it's translated into one of, somewhere in here. So that was my only two comments.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the vision of the BPS graduate, that's, that's a pretty static picture, you know, in the sense that that's not something that's going to change from you. You don't have goals that we're looking to meet there. With the North Star and the mission and the theory of change, do you have a timeframe in mind that you envision this to be a valid statement of what our, our goals and our map to get there are for the district?
Are, are you referring?
I've just said, the document is as a whole, you know, just like, how long, how long do you, what's the lifespan of this document?
Our goal, our hope is that we hit some key milestones over the next three years for each one of our priorities.
Okay. And, yeah, I mean, and looking at the document, the priorities are the ones that, you know, could potentially change over time. But, you know, the reason why I'm asking this question is, when you take a step back and you look at this, this is essentially our district in a nutshell. You know, there's, there's not a lot of changeable values here, other than, you know, those priorities. And those priorities change as we, you know, we're able to check things off the box, you know, check boxes off the list and say, you know, we've accomplished this, we've made these changes. You know, we, we of course talk all the time about opportunity and achievement gaps, and we would hope to, you know, of course, change that. So maybe the mission will change at some point in the future. But, you know, I ask all these questions because from my view, I think this is a great document, and, you know, wordsmithing aside, you know, and capturing accurately, you know, what we envisioned to be, you know, the, the, the finite and defined goals of each of these priorities is appreciated. But, you know, I think this is a great document from the con, from the standpoint of, we have something to refer people to now, you know? And we've had different versions of this, and, you know, they've, as you've walked us through with the 100-day plan, the strategic vision of the district, your implementation plan, Superintendent, we've begun to whittle those things down. I think what's helpful now is that we've got a couple of different ways to put this message out to folks. You want to know what we think about our district and what we think we need to focus ourselves on, and where we're going to focus all of our, our work and our project and our energy over the next couple of years? It's right here. And, you know, as you, as you've got it footnoted here, you've got a lot of helpful, larger, expanded documents that you refer to for people that, you know, are really interested in those kind of things. I think what will be really helpful now is to be able to start to show people how exactly we're doing, we're making moves on each of these priorities. And you've laid that out here excellently, you know, these six priorities are easy, easily digestible, they're easily understandable. And I think as soon as we continue, you know, we begin to, to start showing, you know, this is how we reach rationalization around our district reconfiguration, this is how we demonstrate instructional coherence, this is how we're making the effort around prioritizing adult learning, people are really going to be able to buy into what the vision is of this district. And so I, you know, I, I just, I think it's a great document, and I, I don't want to spend too much time on it because I know how much good work we have to do that's substantive and tangible that will really move this, this district forward. And I appreciate that vision that you've outlined for us. So thank you.
Thank you. This, maybe I would, maybe I need to just underscore this. It is so important for us to be able to communicate what is the work over the next few years. And it's taken quite a process to kind of get to this level of crystallization. But this is what people have asked us for, like, tell us how we can help, tell us what we should move on. We, school leaders have said this as well. And we're a school system that fundamentally believes that schools are in units who change, schools have autonomy and to approach the work. But we've got to get, also at the same time, give very clear guidance on what are the priorities that we care about as an entire school system. So this is meant as a communication document as much as it is a planning document.
So, Ms. LaCanto. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, anything?
No, I appreciate greatly getting from 29 to six. As I look through here, there are just a couple of things that keep popping up in my head that I'm not quite sure where they fit into. And I don't want to get into a whole other conversation for now. The two things, like, so for example, all of our schools don't have nurses, all of our schools don't have school nurses. For example, would that come under district reconfiguration or allocating funds equitably? Where would that conversation happen? As we're beginning to look at what does the school need to have function? Because it will come back again to us when we start looking at where we're headed. So I'm just trying to figure out some of those things that we, we toyed with here or have not really come to any resolution over the past year. Will those conversations fit into these six kind of priorities? And if they don't, then what happens to those kinds of issues?
So yes, they will need to. We know that our schools, like this school committee has talked about what is kind of baseline needs for all schools. We can't fulfill those needs unless we have a sustainable system. To get to a sustainable system, we are going to need to be more coherent in terms of our grade configurations. We need to distribute funds more equitably. We need to look at some of the opportunities to be even more efficient with central office services. And so, yes, all of it will absolutely need to fit into that. And we will be bringing back to the school committee updates on each one of these priorities and how it aligns to some of the things we talked about.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
I, I actually think there's brilliance here, and it's very exciting to see. I think there's, I think there is more editorial work that we all can think about. And part of it is, I'm not sure where the levels of abstractions are, you know, and it's uneven, so it's sometimes not always easy to find the coherence. But in this, I think the priorities, I think it's a great idea, and these priorities seem to be right on. I think they're building us towards this, and this is a really great step forward, and looking forward to how we attach this to outcomes and metrics. I think it will be more coherent to all of those relationships become apparent. So this is really very exciting. So thank you for the hard work.
So this committee has heard me quote in the past when we worked on our strategic plan. I think it was Mark Twain who said, "I'm sorry, I apologize for writing you a long letter. I didn't have the time to write you a short letter." And I think it was Mark Twain. But I am really glad, Superintendent, that you and your team have worked on writing a short letter, because 29 priorities is too many, 19 priorities is too many. People don't understand it, and they think you're all over the place. When you get it down to six, that's critical. I know you worked hard on every word on there. Having said that, I'm going to make three suggestions to you. I really appreciate Ms. Oliver Davila talking about partnerships and families. I do think in that, it's missing the word communication. And I want to get back to, in the evaluation, and what this committee consistently talks with you about as, as one opportunity to focus on in the future, is communication with school communities, with our students, with our parents, with our families, and our interested parties. And I think it is critical for you for some, to somehow call that out, to acknowledge that that's a priority for you and your team, because people will expect to see that, to make sure that that's heard. So I know you're saying it by improving, unifying our approach to serving schools, but sometimes the simplest language is the best. The second piece is, to me, district reconfiguration is interesting, and I know you first made a proposal to us a year ago that we kind of put at hold. I do acknowledge that it was Dean Robinson who said, "I'd love to see a situation where you're having, you're bringing in some outside experts to talk." That was a suggestion you had made a year ago, and you're actually having that happen on, on Saturday as part of Fall Open House that I look forward to attending, as I know others do as well. But to me, reconfiguration is one piece that affects overall facilities. And the tremendous work that Chief Dorsey is, is leading up with, with regards to build BPS, that the city is about to make a billion-dollar investment in our facilities, the question of what's the right time to start those schools, what's the right structure for those schools? Is it K to five, six to eight, nine to 12? Is it K to eight, nine to 12? Is it K to six, seven to 12? Is it a mix of all of those? Because we are a portfolio approach. Many parents have fought long and hard to have the opportunity to K to eight, and we should recognize that and be sensitive to that for those communities that have worked for it. Reconfiguration is going to be all over the piece, but what reconfiguration is, but more importantly, what we're going to do with our facilities? And how are we making sure that they are safe and clean and meeting the, the social and, you know, the physical and emotional security of our students, that they're fed well, that they are clean, that they're hospitable environments to learn? Everything outside of instructional coherence, I think is a bigger picture piece that, to me, reconfiguration is one piece of it. So I just, I'm picking up on Ms. Robinson saying, well, what about nurses as one example? But so much of the work that what we're going to do around facilities, when we say schools of the age that have changed, where is it that we say in here, we want to make sure those physical structures are the best that they can be? Are they configured properly? Do they start and end at the right time? Do we transport our students to them correctly? Do we feed them right? Do we meet their physical, emotional, social needs? Everything outside of the actual instructional coherence, I think could probably fit in that box. So that may be the one way to kind of reconfigure the reconfiguration priority to meet the, the physical space needs. It is a suggestion for you and your team to consider, because I'm not talking about adding one, but I think we need to tackle. People are going to look and say, well, we're about to make a billion-dollar investment in our schools. Where's that fit in here? And so I, I think calling that one out, reconfiguration would fit in it, some of these other things would fit in it. But making sure the physical structures that we have are ready for 21st century learning, that is a big part of the planning for this, and how we configure our schools, how we set them up, how we have our students physically ready to learn, may fit right in there. It's a suggestion. Thank you. Otherwise, I think it's great work, and thank you for working so hard on narrowing it down. That, and the other piece that I have to call out is how you are particularly talking about schools as agents of change. That is our theory of action. That is so critical for people to understand that we really believe it's the school leaders who are driving the change, and the district is there to support it. So thank you for that work.
We'll move on now to public comments on report. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I'd like to call up Mr. John Mudd.
Sorry to keep you, just a few quick ones, I hope. The, the first is on the MCAS scores, and we've got a new generation or whatever it is of MCAS. Seems to me, we can look at the data and it'll say here, for example, that there's this 37 percentage point gap, you know, in English language reformers between blacks and whites. It seemed to me we could look at the gaps earlier, not the absolute scores, but what's been happening with the gaps? If last year it was 30%, and we're now at 37, or it's 37 now and last year was 45, you know, that would give some indication of the trends of what's happening, even though the absolute numbers may not be commensurate. Secondly, just the way you did highlighting the six schools, or however many, that, that had superior performance on the scores, what about highlighting those schools that had superior performance on reducing the gaps? You know, so that we specifically look at that and see, are there models, are there things that we can learn from and begin, as Dean Coleman would say, to move it to scale? Third kind of comment, I, I tell you, I'm not a professional educator, but I still get confused on the early indicators that we are identifying, and it's a confusion between, are we early indicating individual students, which is what I hear, you know, who are having problems? But how does that get at the group issues that, you know, both Robinsons, I think, were addressing? Or when we talk about marginalized groups, how do we move from these indicators of problems to group strategies that say, this is how we're going to address black boys or Latino boys, or whatever group we're, we're targeting? And I think I also hear something about a mindset that we're going to change, the long-term process, which I totally concur with. But not only do we have to change the mindset, but we have to tie that to the skills, the curriculum, and so on. And how is that, that translation done, particularly in dealing with groups of kids? What, what are, how are we going to engage those black boys with the curriculum, with the skills and the teachers, and so on? Finally, the big question to me on the, the six, coherence, how should I put it? The focus is crucial. Where I find a problem, I have prioritized so much with you, human capital issues of hiring, of retaining, of putting together an education team in each school to deal with the, the students there, holding principals accountable for that. How does this fit in here? We talk about diversity. We talk about, you know, in my specialized field, sped ELL students. We have capacity issues in those areas. How does that fit in to these foci? Thank you, and I'm sorry to run over.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Mr. Neal, that concludes our speakers for public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any new business this evening? Dean Robinson?
Yes, it's not necessarily new business, just I forgot to mention during the superintendent's report, one of the updates this week, there were two major running events that highlighted our students. The middle school championship of all the middle schoolers, I think over 400 students ran, and I was fortunate to be there because my daughter was there, and it, ooh, it took me way, it took me back. It took me back about 25 years when I watched the relays. Oh my goodness. But what was amazing for me, Dr. Chang, and I give great, great kudos to your athletics department, to the leadership. What was amazing was the emphasis on disability. The speaker was a Paralympic athlete, and I saw kids with specific needs, different special needs, competing. And, you know, we all know that disability isn't just physical. And so I saw kids that I know in different schools who were some of the elite runners. And so I loved just to see the inclusion of the day, even though it took me back 25 years. And then on Saturday, Soul Train was highlighted. They had their running event, and Mr. LaCanto, how did, how did you do?
I lost to a nine-year-old, thank you very much.
Wow.
Did you finish?
Oh, yeah.
But he finished, he finished.
Your nine-year-old.
My, my nine-year-old, she's been trained well.
So that was a really amazing, I wasn't able to attend that one. My husband and daughter ran. But again, once again, our student
But again, once again, our students were on display. Some of the same students who were in the middle school championship also ran on Saturdays. They had two major days of running. And I told them they needed to go home and ice their legs. But I, I meant to mention that earlier, just to, again, we, we love noting the bright spots. And when I see inclusiveness among our students, the staff who were just as excited to scream their kids on, it was, it was extremely encouraging. So, major, major kudos to the athletics department.
Dean Robinson, some bad news for you that just because we now need to go home and ice our legs after runs, and nine-year-olds don't have to.
No. No, they, they did complain on Sunday. Some of them I saw at another community event, said that their legs were tired. So I was able to give them my track coaching experience, their, their lessons.
Thanks, Coach. Any other new business? That concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, November 1st at 6:00 PM, a week from tonight. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Looks like unanimous consent. We are adjourned.